Evening, everyone.
Oh, city.
Welcome you here tonight. Um, before we get started, I'd like to, uh, request our, request our Chaplain Remco Brahmet to lead us in invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray together. Our God in heaven, we are thankful tonight that as we meet, we do so under an open heaven from which your presence flows to us in rich abundance. And as the volatility in our nation is on the rise, we pray for peace and unity. And we pray that here in the community of Milton, we may preserve that peace and unity among our citizens. As I stand at the crosswalk each morning, I am reminded of what a diverse community we are. East Asian, South Asian, Eastern European, Western European, Australian, African, Latin American, black and white. And I'm reminded that we are all created equal under God and equally deserving of one another's kindness and consideration and love. Help us to preserve a, a place of equality and humanity in our city and to be vigilant against any trend or tendency that would stir hatred, or disunity, or discrimination. We pray also for great wisdom on our city leadership, our mayor and city council and city staff, in the light of all the changes that are coming up here this year. Help us to be patient with one another and give us wisdom in all the decisions that need to be made and all the actions that need to be taken. We ask for your blessing in that light on our meeting tonight as well. And ask that you watch over our police officers and firefighters as they meet the emergency needs of our citizens tonight. And we ask for a special blessing on our police chief as he begins his tenure and takes command of our department. Give him great wisdom, uh, great discernment and adaptability as he assumes his command. We pray all of these things in your name with great thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Remco. Remco. I'd like to call the regular meeting Milton, uh, Milton City Council for Monday, January 30th, 2017 to order. Sudi, if you'll please call roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the January 30th, 2017, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that their speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. So please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. We welcome everybody here to, uh, our city council meeting here in the city hall. Um, one special guest that we, I don't know if I'd say guest or not, but it's an honor for us to have in attendance our new police chief. And, uh, Steve, I don't know if, uh, you don't mind introducing Rich to our, our citizens.
Am I on? We good? Absolutely, Mayor. Um, there he is. Um, this is, uh, this is our new chief, Chief Rich Austin. He hails to us from, uh, Charlotte Mecklenburg, where he commanded the Internal Affairs Division and has run just about every other part of the police department over the years. That's a roughly, uh, I think, an eighteen-hundred-person department. And, uh, we are very fortunate to have him as part of our team.
Okay. Just then, uh, want to wish you a warm welcome, Rich.
Thanks.
And everybody in the audience, just hope that you don't have to meet with Rich. Unless it's a good thing. Okay, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. This is agenda item number seventeen zero two-two.
Okay. Um, a couple things I'd like to, uh, add in executive session to discuss land acquisition. Um, I'd also like to go to our consent agenda and pull items number six and seven and place them on a later new business item for tonight's meeting. Is there anything on the agenda, Joe?
Yeah, we've got a couple of, uh, appointments to committees, Mayor. Want to move those up to, uh, after reports and presentations?
Yep, we've got two of those, so, okay.
Yeah, and Mayor, I want to, um, defer agenda item number seventeen dash oh thirty-three for the Board of Zonings Appeals until next meeting.
Okay. Bill?
I have, uh, an appointee for the Milton Equestrian Committee that I'd like to present tonight.
Yes, you'd like to present, so. All right, Sudi, are we, uh, getting all these items on here? You keep me straight?
Got it all.
Okay. All right. So I'll, uh, open up for a motion for, uh, the agenda as, as adjusted.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda with all of those changes that are too numerous to mention.
Second.
Okay, have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. Sudi, do we have any public, general public comment?
We do have two, sir.
Okay.
First one is Mr. Tim Becker.
Tonight, I'm Tim Becker, one-five-six-two-five, Canterbury Chase, Milton, Georgia. Tonight, there are a number of important items on council's agenda. I will be speaking on several of these items. Some of these items have been on council's agenda for many months. Council seems to be covering the same old ground over and over again. Some of us feel like we are in Milton's version of the movie Groundhog Day. Community septic is a glaring example. I noticed that the city is going to spend money on a community septic consultant. One of these consultants has consulted to a community septic vendor for many years.
Mr. Becker, can I step forward and we will give you plenty of time? Can't just, could, we have moved that specific item to its own. Is that okay in general public comment?
It is. Can still be discussed, yes. Okay. Do you really think we are going to get objective advice from such a consultant? I have been a consultant for twenty-five years. I know the business. Tonight, I am entering into the record two journal articles that I've written on hiring and managing consultants. My question to council is, why do we continue to kick the can down the road on community septic? Why can't council make a decision on this issue, which has been in play for nearly a year? Citizens have been very clear in their opposition to community septic. Very clear, crystal clear. I want to remind council that over two thousand citizens signed one or more of Milton Coalition's petitions. As you deliberate tonight, I ask that you refer to our last petition. I have made a copy for each one of you.
Sudi?
I've made a copy of, uh, for each one of you. Some of you have disparaged the Milton Coalition petition for various ridiculous and self-serving reasons. However, I am quite sure that such detractors do not know that the right to petition for the regress, redress of grievances is one of the five rights enumerated in the First Amendment of the Constitution. It is the oldest of these rights, with a history dating back to the Magna Carta. The founding fathers not only viewed the First Amendment rights as civil liberties to be protected, they believed that these rights should be vigorously exercised. In fact, the founders believed that the forceful exercise of the Constitution's rights was actually a good barometer of the health of the republic. I believe the founders would applaud citizen watchdog volunteers petitioning their legislators. So those of you who denigrate petitioning citizens and their petitions are revealing an ignorance and disrespect for our Constitution. In closing, I want to highlight item nine of our petition, where citizens pledged to vote against any politician that does not uphold the principles of our petition. Increasingly, citizens are suggesting to the Milton Coalition that we should recall one or more council members. This would require, you guessed it, a petition. We would need to gather just shy of five hundred voter signatures within ninety days to put a recall petition on the ballot. I assure you that this would be child's play. As I have done so many times in the past, I urge council to listen to and respect your constituents and uphold the principles laid out in the Milton Coalition petition. Please do not understate, underestimate the resolve of Milton citizens to achieve clean, competent, and representative government. Ultimately, the will of citizens will prevail. Thank you, council.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ms. Laura Bentley.
Hi, good evening, Laura Bentley, twenty-five-hundred, Bethany Church Road. I have a general comment about the direction you'll be taking tonight. Milton is unique in large part due to the scarcity of sewer access. Here in Milton, we have benefited from lack of sewer, larger lots and lower density, less strain on our infrastructure. Where there is sewer, there is density, big density. Just check out across from Cambridge High School, Green Road at Arnold Mill. Those of us and several of you understand this and even fought hard to reach agreement on the IGA sewer map. This agreement gave citizens assurance that sewer would not spread. Residential community septic represents the very same density threat. Fictitious density yields submitted by developers, density yields which rarely equal one home per acre. You heard from the community on December seventh, two thousand fifteen, regarding residential community septic and the CSO, and again on June twentieth of two thousand sixteen with the Ebenezer rezoning, denying residential community septic. And any mention of a CSO or community septic was removed entirely from our recently updated comp plan. Time and time again, the community has said no to residential community septic, and so have you. I ask you tonight to consider limiting the scope of the work detailed in items six and seven of the consent agenda, which was just moved, thank you, to only commercial community septic. Not a dime of taxpayer money should be spent for consultants to draft guidelines that allow for residential community septic. I also request that the community be permitted a forum in which to openly convey their feelings about commercial community septic with the hired consultant in a transparent forum early on, so that they can understand our feelings. Commercial community septic guidelines and prohibiting residential community septic should take no more than four weeks and only require a minimal expense to the taxpayers. Thank you for considering my suggestions.
Thank you. Sudi, do we have any more general public comments?
That's all general, sir.
Okay, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. If you wouldn't mind reading those items.
First item is approval of the December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, regular city council meeting minutes, agenda item number seventeen zero two-three. Next, approval of the January ninth, two thousand seventeen, regular city council meeting minutes, agenda item number seventeen zero two-four. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Mobile Joe's Professionals LLC for construction of a boulder wall and landscape improvements at the Broadwell Pavilion. Our fourth consent agenda item this evening is approval of professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Barge Wagoner Sumner and Cannon, Inc., for Freemenville at Providence Roundabout Peer Review. Agenda item number seventeen zero two-six. Our final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Deluxe Athletics LLC for Bell Memorial Park Turf Field additions. Agenda item number seventeen zero two-seven.
Okay. Those items, do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for approval for the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item. I believe we moved to new business.
Our next item is consideration of a resolution, appointing members to the City of Milton Cultural Arts Committee for District Three, Post One, and District Two, Post Two. Agenda item number seventeen zero three-one, Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. Uh, next, our councilmember Joe Longoria, who wants to nominate his post.
Uh, councilmembers, I'd like to nominate Emily Griffith, uh, to the, um, Milton Cultural Arts Committee. Emily has a bachelor's degree from Florida Southern College with an emphasis in art. It wasn't until later in life that she found her gift in transforming blank canvas into works of art. She's studied at the Atlanta College of Art, D. D'Amizio's World of Art, and the London Art College, where she learned, uh, to solidify her techniques. She's been voted best animal artist by Atlanta Magazine in twenty-ten, best people's cho, or people's choice best artist from Johns Creek Arts on the Creek, two thousand eleven, Award of Merit for Arts in the Heart, two thousand eleven, and is an official artist of the University of Georgia's UGA, having painted UGA seven, eight, and nine. So I know a lot of people in the audience might be excited about that. Her clientele includes, uh, Tori Spelling, Cindy Wilson, Allison Pill, Victoria Stillwell, just to name a few. And Emily is also a past member and officer for the Alpharetta Art Guild and a past member for the Roswell Art Guild.
Okay. And then I will open up for a motion for approval of Emily Griffith.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Emily Griffith for, um, District Three, Post One, to the Milton Cultural Arts Committee.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from, uh, councilmember Kuntz, second from councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. So, good deal. Um, Sudi, next we've got, uh, councilmember Matt Kuntz has a point.
Yeah, so, um, I'd like to, uh, appoint for the Milton Cultural Arts Committee, Dr. Laurie Goodling. And she has been a member of the Milton community since two thousand and ten. She lives and works in the community along with her two children, who attend Milton High School and Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School. Laurie is an assistant professor of English at Perimeter College of Georgia State University, where she teaches literature and creative writing classes and serves as campus coordinator of the Honors College. She also serves as advisor to the Student Literary Magazine Creative License, which publishes original art, photography, short fiction, and poetry. As a writer, she has published a variety of works in magazines, newspapers, blogs, textbooks, and academic journals. And she is a hobby writer of poetry and a fan of writers' workshops and writers' festivals. And, um, you know, I, studying a lot of different art as well as out there, I thought it was very important to include a writer in the, on the group as well. And they're very hard to find in Milton. We've got some of them, but they're all, you know, very busy. So I think it's great that we've got a writer that's, uh, able to tell the stories of the culture that we are to become. So, um, I'm very honored to recommend Laurie Goodling for the District Two, Post Two Milton, Milton Cultural Arts Committee position.
Okay, I'll open up for a motion on that. Nominee?
Mayor, I move that we, uh, appoint Laurie Goodling to, uh, the Milton Cultural Arts Committee.
Second.
All right, you have a motion by, uh, councilmember Longoria, second by councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous, Sudi. So at, uh, this point, I would, uh, like to ask Laurie and Emily step forward and I'll swear them in. Did you have a question? Okay, my bad. I've got one more, excuse me, one second. Got one more appointee, councilmember Luss. And I apologize, I think you mentioned that when we stepped in here. I was thinking your question, sorry.
Um, this time, I'd like to, uh, present and propose Dr. Elizabeth Dravay. Liz grew up in Hamilton, Massachusetts, an area that is well-known for its equestrian heritage. Hamilton and the surrounding towns have over four hundred and fifty miles of public trails for horse riding, walking, and biking. The area is known for its abundance of local and internationally acclaimed horse events in jumping, eventing, polo, and fox hunting.
Yeah, but, go ahead and, I'll, I'll, we'll let you finish that, Bill.
All right. Horses have always been a central part of Elizabeth's life. She started riding at the age of eight, focusing on three-day horse eventing, dressage, cross-country, and stadia. Over the last thirty years, Liz has owned, raised, trained, and competed with eleven different horses. She also bred four of these horses at her own barns. Liz, her husband, and her three children moved from the northeast to Milton, Georgia in two thousand twelve. She was attracted to Milton for its equestrian communities and the town's commitment to maintain its rural feel. Her family lives on an equestrian property where they raise their three horses. She still enjoys dressage, trail riding, and teaching her kids how to ride and take care of their horses. Liz holds a doctorate of pharmacy degrees, a licensed practicing pharmacist. And I'd like to propose Elizabeth Dravay to the Milton Equestrian Committee.
Okay, and if you can hold that out, I'm gonna finish swearing in the, to Emily and Laurie, and, um, then we'll come back and take a, take a motion on that. So, Emily and Laurie, I'll step forward, we'll swear them in. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Milton Cultural Arts Committee of the city, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution, and the laws of the state of Georgia, and of the United States of America. Congratulations. Thank you so much for stepping up and helping. If I could ask the council to come forward and, uh...
I'll call for our committee head to move.
You want to pick your ear? Okay. a, for a motion on her point.
Mayor, oh.
I think, uh, yeah. Um, Sudi, if you would read, read the agenda item for, um, we're on the question committee.
Consideration of a resolution, appointing a member to the City of Milton Equestrian Committee for District Two, Post One, and District Two, Post Two. Agenda item number seventeen zero three-two.
Okay. Now, I'll open up for a motion for councilmember Luss's point.
Mayor, I, I move that we approve, uh, appointment of Elizabeth Dravay to the Equestrian Committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Longoria, second. Councilmember Morick, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sudi. So next, I will move councilmember Kuntz as a nomination.
So I am proud to announce for the Milton Equestrian Committee Tamara DeJurgis, who, um, moved to Milton in two thousand and ten with her husband and daughter, and who are also horse lovers. Um, she owns four horses in total, uh, two Eros and Tango are show horses. Tango is huge, by the way, he's, I think, sixteen hands, right? Olivia is her daughter's future show pony, and Dante retired off the track thoroughbred. She's a member of the United States Dressage Federation with a bronze and silver medal winner and a CLS III rating. She is currently working towards a USDF gold medal and a four-star rating. She had previously served on the Georgia Dressage and Combined Training Board of Directors. She was a big help in creating the language for this very Milton Equestrian Committee resolution that we all passed, which the city council voted to adopt, and she is looking forward to working on projects to keep equestrian activities in Milton. So I'm very proud to, um, present Tamara DeJurgis, uh, to be my appointee for District Two, Post Two, on the Milton Equestrian Committee.
Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
I'll move to approve Tamara DeJurgis to the, uh, Milton Equestrian Committee, District Two, Post Two.
All right, we have a motion, councilmember Luss, second, councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. So, uh, next, I'll ask Liz and Tamara to step forward and we'll, uh, swear them in. All right, if you both would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Milton Equestrian Committee of the city, and I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution, and the laws of the state of Georgia, and of the United States of America. Welcome, because you both are very important to the city, and we appreciate your help. If you guys... Then I'll ask the council to come down and we'll, uh, do a picture. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
can be used without the pole. So in instances where we have a property and it's more appropriate to put the plaque directly on the building, that certainly can be accommodated. These markers are currently part of the package that is out to bid. And I just wanted to show you other signs as part of this package. And you can see that the wire is carried through from the pole to the edge of the sign, in this directional sign, as well as in the banners. There has been a Historic Markers Subcommittee that is working on the language for each of these markers. And as part of this initiative by this Subcommittee, the issue has come up of the possibility of creating a two-sided marker. And I did have our consultant draw up what a two-sided marker could look like. The downside of that is that we would have to lose the wire that is carried through on the other signs. And of course, there would be an additional charge because we will now have two plaques mounted on a pole. And we estimate the additional charge of that would be fifteen hundred dollars. But this did come up, and Councilmember Lusk is certainly a member of that Subcommittee, but he did ask me to present the parameters of the idea of having a third choice, first choice being a single-sided sign, the second just being a plaque affixed to a building, and thirdly, the option of possibly including this as part of the sign package. Since you had not approved this, we felt that it was necessary to come back to the council for your review of this proposal.
Councilmember Lusk, do you want to address that?
Yes, thanks, ma'am. We've been working on this Historic Marker Task Force for the last five or six months, and developed over thirty-three sites and homes and other structures in the process. And it's, we've become aware of the fact that just a single-sided sign and a wall-mounted sign are not enough. We need another option, and that would be a two-sided sign. In the bid package that's advertised right now, and how we're going to amend it if this is approved, is we're getting unit prices on each different option. And when we get those prices in, and in the meantime, we'll determine how many wall-mounted, how many single-sided, and how many double-sided signs we're gonna need. So when we get the prices in, in four weeks, we can determine by using those unit prices, how we're gonna stay within the budget that we established. So we won't know until we get the prices in, number one. But number two, we'll have unit prices on all of these, so we can make a final determination which option we're gonna use for each specific property out there. So we'll stay within budget. This will just allow us to have another option.
Do you have any questions or comments on that? I question, I see the double-sided, do you have some specific examples where the double-sided would be a better option?
Up on Freemanville Road, just north of Red Road, is the Phillips Cemetery. And there's an historic marker in front of that cemetery right now. And that is a double-sided sign. We intend to place a marker across the road at the Phillips Homestead. So I think it just to be consistent in areas like that, that we put a double-sided sign on that property. So that's one example. Some of the properties where a single-sided sign would apply would be down in Crab Apple, some of the historic homes down there that sit up close to the road. So a single-sided, or even a wall-mounted side sign would apply in those situations.
I know the double-sided makes sense if you've got people coming from different directions, but if you're actually driving, you can't really, you almost need to stop, pull over and look at one, so that's one.
And that's the other example. Mrs. DeJurgis is aware of that. On her property sets the Double Branches Courthouse, right there on Birmingham Road, near the intersection of Freemanville Road. And we think a double-sided sign there would be applicable. So those who drive by it from either directions would be able to read that sign.
Anybody else? All right. So do we need to do anything on that, take any action?
Well, the sign, I think it was previously approved without this double-sided sign. So I think, so that we can amend the bid that's coming through, that's currently out to bid, we could put an addendum to it. It would be helpful to have a...
Do we need to?
I don't think we need to take any official action right now. This is just under reports and presentations.
I guess the formal action could be done once you have a bid and an addendum and contract.
Okay, that sounds great.
All right. Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is Presentation of Green Communities Recertification, Ms. Michelle McIntosh-Ross.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here's our Green Communities poster that the Atlanta Regional Commission made for us, and you're getting some handouts, so I'll just let that happen a little bit. Okay. Oh, and we have that plaque. So again, yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to formally announce that the City of Milton has successfully recertified with the Atlanta Regional Commission's Green Communities Program at the bronze level. As you may recall, back in 2012, we certified with the ARC's Green Communities Program at the bronze level, and the requirement is that we recertify every four years. So we went ahead and did that. And last week, on January twenty-fifth, the City of Milton was recognized along with Douglasville and the City of Norcross for being one of the 2016 ARC Green Communities recipients. We have a video that we will play shortly, but I just want to go ahead and thank all of the departments in the City of Milton and all the department heads for making this possible. And we will be working towards climbing the levels in green communities. So let's just go to the video, and then we can discuss if we need to.
The Atlanta Regional Commission is pleased to announce the 2016 Certified Green Communities. By choosing to invest in renewable energy, conserve water, reduce waste, and restore vital natural resources, these local governments have achieved impressive results. The 2016 Green Communities are leading the way to environmental sustainability in Metro Atlanta. The City of Milton first sought Green Communities certification in 2012, and continues its commitment to being green by recertifying at the bronze level. Milton hosts annual events for the collection and disposal of household hazardous waste. In March 2016, the city collected over nineteen thousand pounds of batteries, pesticides, paints, and other items that are not allowed in residential trash. The city's Transfer of Development Rights Program is used to protect Milton's bucolic open spaces and farmland from development. The program redirects growth to more appropriate areas of the city, such as the Crab Apple District. Milton is one of only three communities in Georgia certified as a National Wildlife Federation Community Wildlife Habitat. A leader among its peers, the city has worked with residents to improve the well-being of both wildlife and the community. The city has adopted a night sky ordinance to reduce excess light pollution, which impacts humans and wildlife, and to conserve energy. Since 2009, the city's Safe Routes to School Program has promoted opportunities for students to walk and bike safely to school. The city's program includes monthly walk-to-school days, a crossing guard for local schools, and infrastructure projects that improve the walking environment.
The residents of the Milton community live in a very green community, and they want to preserve that in perpetuity. The Milton City Council supports that and supports Green Communities initiatives by adopting and implementing policies that further that green initiative, as well as lending financial support towards that cause.
Congratulations to ARC's 2016 Certified Green Communities. Douglasville, Milton, and Norcross, along with the sixteen previously certified Green Communities, are leading the way to a greener future for our region. For more information about how you can join them, please visit our website.
And there, excuse me, and there you have it. We'll be having a press release put out after this meeting tomorrow or whatever, and hopefully we'll have a good response. Any questions, discussions, do you have anything to add?
Any questions? Michelle, I want to thank you, but also Teresa, thank you so much for everything you've done. It's certainly an honor. So any questions?
I know that was a lot of work.
Yes, it was.
Thank you for all your work.
I'll applaud.
Thank you.
Okay. We don't have any items on first presentation, so we'll move on to our public hearing. Sudi, if you'll please call our first item.
This is Consideration of the Issuance of an Alcohol Beverage License to Erko LLC, Doing Business as Manhattan Pizza and Grill, 5230 Windward Parkway, Suite 105, Milton, Georgia, 30004. This is Agenda Item Number 17030, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you recall, back on November seventh, we brought forward this alcohol beverage license under the name Dortlu LLC. This company is just going through a restructuring of their organization and ownership, so they're changing name to Erko LLC. They're still gonna continue to do business as Manhattan Pizza and Grill. In addition, they will be adding distilled spirits to their license they already have for wine and malt beverages. They have performed and conformed with all of our requirements, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing on that. Anybody have any questions for Bernadette? Okay, I'll open up for a motion then.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 17030.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second. Councilmember Longoria, for approval of this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our zoning agenda. Sudi, if you'll please read the rules and sound the first item.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances. In addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments, I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of ten minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, an affidavit must accompany your public comment card. Before beginning your presentation or comment, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization, if applicable. Our first zoning agenda item this evening is Consideration of RC 1607, To amend the AG1 Agricultural District Regarding Paved and Unpaved Roads in Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 2, in Section 64-416, Development Standards. Agenda Item Number 16282. First presentation was at December fifth, 2016 meeting. This was discussed at the December twelfth, 2016 council work session. This was deferred at the December nineteenth, 2016 meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the purpose of this text amendment is to amend the existing ordinance to ensure that any parcel fronting on an unpaved road or gravel road remain at least three acre in size. This item was discussed at a work session on December the twelfth by the city council, and at that time, the city council directed staff to change the ordinance to reflect that in instances where parcels are adjacent to both paved and unpaved roads, the following shall apply. Specifically, the portion of the parcel adjacent to an unpaved road shall be developed with minimum three acre lots, and the portion of the parcel that is adjacent to the paved road may be subdivided into one acre lots. There was also discussion at the December nineteenth city council meeting on this item, and at that time, the mayor and city council recommended to defer this item until the January thirtieth meeting, which is tonight, to allow adequate time for staff to give notice to property owners whose properties front on both a paved and unpaved road that may be impacted by the proposed amendment. Staff has received inquiries from approximately six property owners regarding the notice sent to the city, and we have attached to our memo the list of the unpaved roads, as well as the parcel ID numbers to which these notices were sent, and they are listed there as well. I also bring your attention to the actual text amendment. We are proposing a change tonight. You should have in front of you the text amendment showing some language in blue. And that is the proposed change we would like to make tonight to Section E2. That talks about three acres adjacent to an unpaved road, the following rules shall apply. And we would like to change subsection A to read the language that you see in red. Each proposed lot shall provide at least one hundred feet of road footage, the minimum dimension of which shall be maintained to the building line of the lot, period. Upon discussion with our attorney, we felt that the blue language, which was originally included, was superfluous. We did not need it. Therefore, we are proposing that that blue language be deleted. And then subsection B, of course, reads, each proposed lot shall provide at least two hundred feet of lot width at the building line, which relates to the requirement in subsection A. So that is the proposed change before you tonight, keeping in mind the direction to staff that was given by the city council at your previous meetings.
Okay. Any specific questions right now? I've probably got some, do we have some public comment on this?
Yes, sir, we do.
If you have anything you want to ask real quick, or we'll talk to public comment. All right, Sudi, you said we do have some public comment.
We have eight on this item.
All right, if you want to start with first speaker.
First one is going to be Mr. Cleveland Slater.
We are proposing a change tonight. You should have in front of you the text amendment showing some language in blue, and that is the proposed change we would like to make tonight to Section E2 that talks about three acres adjacent to an unpaved road, the following rules shall apply. And we would like to change subsection A to read the language that you see in red. Each proposed lot shall provide at least 100 feet of road frontage, the minimum dimension of which shall be maintained to the building line of the lot, period. Upon discussion with our attorney, we felt that the blue language, which was originally included, was superfluous. We did not need it. Therefore, we are proposing that that blue language be deleted. And then subsection B, of course, reads each proposed lot shall provide at least 200 feet of lot width at the building line, which relates to the requirement in subsection A. So that is the proposed change before you tonight, keeping in mind the direction to staff that was given by the city council at your previous meetings.
Okay. Any specific questions right now? I've probably got some, do we have some public comment on this?
Yes, sir, we do.
Have anything you want to ask real quick or what type of public comment?
Public comment.
Pretty good, okay. All right, Sudi, you said we do have some public comment.
We have eight on this item.
Okay, all right. If you want to start with the first speaker?
First one is going to be Mr. Cleveland Slater.
This is a topic that we've now discussed for maybe almost a year. I have a couple of concerns with the language as it's currently drafted, and in particular is one question that I'd like for you to make sure you ask the city attorney for his opinion on before you make a decision tonight. I'm concerned that, that the language is a very minor tweak. We're essentially replacing one word. We're changing the word frontage, I believe, to adjacent to, and that may not be sufficient to undo the opinions that have been rendered on the existing, or the existing interpretations. When the Hopewell plat was recently approved, it essentially undone all the protections for gravel roads. And there are essentially two subsets of gravel roads. There's the people in the middle of the gravel roads who have one interest, and there's the people on the ends of the gravel roads who have both, who currently own both pavement and unpaved, unpaved portions of the road that may have a different interest. But we can't forget about the people in the middle. The language in the subdivision ordinance that says access to an unpaved road is very, very important, and it must remain for two reasons. You can have a flag lot, which may probably you could say has access to the gravel road and must remain three acres. But if a developer created a paved or an unpaved road and off of that subdivided lots, that new road accesses only the gravel road. If you don't say he must, if you don't say the lots must be three acres if they have access to an unpaved road, then those lots would be entitled to be one acre. Hopefully, I said that clearly, but I'll try to say it again. If you create a subdivision off of a gravel road and you dedicate the road, whether it's gravel or unpaved, that attaches to that unpaved road, if you do not say, if you have access to unpaved, then those lots would be allowed to be one acre. Now, you can ask the city attorney to render an opinion on that. That's never happened before because we've always had the protection of the subdivision ordinance. The two work together, and later, we're going to talk about amending the subdivision ordinance. So we need to think about what happens when we essentially sanitize it, and we're left only with the simple change from frontage to adjacent to. In the zoning code, there may be some unintended consequences that we didn't anticipate. So please think carefully about the implications of what you're considering tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
The next speaker is Daniel Fernandez.
Daniel Fernandez, 14855 Wood Road. For several weeks, the gravel road text amendments agenda has been deferred, enclosure on the matter delayed. My understanding is that dual frontage property landowners as stakeholders have been contacted in regards to the currently proposed amendments as a result of communication with the organization or residents in opposition. What troubles me is that the gravel road landowners have not been contacted by the city in the same manner. I would like to hear from the council on why gravel road residents were not contacted. After all, on September 27th, 2016, the city conducted a community zoning information meeting that was open to all residents and was advertised to the public as required. This was attended by about ten residents, most of which were, who live on gravel roads. Despite efforts to muddle the progress of these text amendments, I remind you again the following, that number one, the process of approving a plat is controlled by the subdivision ordinance. Per Section 50719, the division of land in AG1 zoning district adjacent to or has access to unpaved road, the following rules must, shall apply. Each proposed lot shall contain a minimum area of three acres. Emphasis is on adjacent and three acres. And the rules for statutory construction assume that lawmakers intended for these meanings to all have, these words to all have meaning. So the fact that those words are in there and we're not giving any weight to them is kind of discouraging. And second, the allowed use purpose of the function is controlled by the zoning ordinance. And I think they're being confused or there's some conception there that there is a conflict. I really don't think there is. I've noted there's no conflict between the subdivision zoning codes as they stand and when harmonized, but I welcome the text amendments that bring further clarity to a matter which continues to be misinterpreted and confusing at times. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi, if you'd please call the next public comment.
Next comment comes from Mr. Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, 1565 Canterbury Chase, Milton, Georgia. Tonight, I am speaking in support of strict interpretation of three acre minimums for lots adjacent to gravel roads. Unfortunately, the current proposed language does not provide such protection. By my reading, the proposed amendment seems to perpetuate the current ambiguity that allows one acre lots, provided those lots can be reached from a paved road. Our ordinance needs to be unequivocal in requiring only three acre lots along gravel roads. I have watched council's discussion on this topic for nearly a year. I have followed it closely. At one point, council was united in advocating for a strict interpretation of three acre minimum. However, in the last few months, some council members have been backsliding on that position. Some council members have argued that three acre minimums violate property rights. This is a dishonest argument. We are merely advocating that the city of Milton apply its subdivision ordinance to the subdivision of properties and that zoning laws align with the subdivision ordinance. I recommend that council remand this matter back to staff to remove any and all ambiguity between our ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Mr. Scott Reese.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Scott Reese, doing business 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia. As a lifelong resident of the city of Milton and my forebears were here for many generations, we own property on a few of the dirt roads. I have relatives that are still in the community that own property on gravel or dirt roads. We have never had a problem in the past. There was a three acre minimum if you fronted or accessed your property from a gravel road. Now, we seem to have decided that we have a major problem with it, so we've got to rewrite the codes. You know, Milton is constantly at the top in the state of Georgia for quality of life. It seems like we were able to do things fine up until, until, you know, we decide we need to rewrite the rules. I understand that a majority of the citizens of Milton that do not live on gravel roads would like to dictate how the people that live on gravel roads or own property on gravel roads should have the ability to market or sell their property at some point. I would like for you to at least consider the property owners and how it affects them because it is, they really have the most skin in the game, and when you take away their property rights, it is really an uncompensated taking. I've been asked by the Day family, which owns 166 acres on Day Road, to make this point. Dr. Sid Curry, who owns 45 acres on Darby Road. Richard Myrick, who owns 150 acres on Row Road, if you're not from here, I guess you'll say Row. The Statham family, which has two landlots on Row Road also. So I would like for you to consider that the existing language has protected us up until this point, and I understand that there's always going to be one thing that fits through the loophole, but you also need to understand that there are a few one acre lots that were created in the past on gravel roads. So there's already those loopholes in there, and I think the rules that we have in place are quite sufficient to control growth on our gravel roads. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
The next speaker is Mr. Tom Statham.
Tom Statham's the name, and we own on Clarity and Row Road, or Row Road, however you want to call it, for, oh, the last 55 years, I guess, my brothers and I have owned that, and we actually owned the roads before Fulton County got them and then gave them to you. And then we're willing to give additional right of way as years go by. This time to change and when, 95% according to what I've seen in the website, is urban already, and there's 5% left. We happen to be part of that 5%. I want to support what Scott said. This is clearly just a regulatory taking of our rights to our property that we've owned a long time in. So, thank you so much for considering that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
The next speaker is Jody Martin.
Hello, Council. Jody Martin, 15350 Thompson Road. My property actually crosses over Burgess Road, which is presently a dirt and gravel road to the other side of Burgess. And I appreciate the comments that everybody else has made. I just wanted to let council know that our neighbors, which have egressed through our property on that gravel road to get to their own four properties, have not been notified of this. We contacted them today to see if they were coming to the meeting, and none of them have received any kind of notice about what's being discussed tonight. And I would echo the comments previously made, that it's important to keep it very clear for property owners and that we keep at the three acre level. We moved to Milton and purchased this property of which we currently have horses on. It is a COVA-designated property for conservation use by the state of Georgia, one of the few in the Milton area, actually up for redesignation starting this year. So it's been COVA-designated the last 10 years, and to make it less rural negates the whole premise of what the town of, city of Milton is trying to do, which is to keep green space. Your emblem is actually a horse, so by, you can't have horses and those types of animals on one acre properties. So I would ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Julie Zoner Bailey.
My name is Julie Zoner Bailey, and I live at 255 Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004. And I'm not familiar with the changes that were made, I guess, since the last time, this was before, since the last time I spoke. So what I'd like to do is to reiterate many citizens' desires to have the three acre minimums maintained. It's always been assumed that the gravel roads would be indeed three acre minimums. The ambiguity that was trying to be, by staff, to be rectified was because a few scenarios had come forward that identified the ambiguity between Fulton County's language and that of the city of Milton. It had been clear that the gravel roads have always been intended to be part of our trail network, and as such, were part of the core values of the citizens and of the city and of our mission and of the fundamental rule character of the city of Milton. To do anything other than to reaffirm the three acre minimums on all gravel roads would be counterintuitive. It would be counterintuitive to citizens adopted when we became a city in 2006. So I would ask that you please remove any ambiguity and that the three acre minimums on all gravel roads, regardless of whether or not they're accessed by the gravel roads or otherwise, indeed be upheld as three acre minimums. I think that that was always the intent. It was what the language had been intended when we adopted the language from Fulton County, and it's more recently that we had seen that there were some loopholes that were unintended. So please close the unintended consequences and reaffirm the three acre minimums that are so fundamental to our rule character. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sudi, if you have any more public comment?
Next speaker is Dot Epperson.
My name is Dorothy Epperson, and I live on 16515 Black Oak Road. And I understand I won't rezone it, and I would please love for it to stay like it is and to keep it where they have to build on three acre lot, because I've been there fifty something years. We helped build that road. The county took it over, and I would like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
The next speaker is Ben Statham.
I'm Ben Statham. I live at 1424 Gant Road, now Ferretta. I want to thank you all for your attempt to keep a beautiful residential neighborhood. But in my particular case, we have no immediate plans, but we would like to keep the future open, the options open. A very difficult piece of land with two gravel roads and a long frontage on a road that's becoming a very main fast road. When the, when and if the property goes over to residential, which it may, may do, it may not, we would like to have the option on this difficult piece of property to have varying sized lots and would not want to be penalized because we do have long gravel road frontage. I appreciate your effort. It's hard to predict the future, and I know you're trying, trying hard to maintain a beautiful residential neighborhood, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Sudi?
And our last, last public comment on RC 1607 is from Fitzroy Graham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm a new resident here. I've been here for the last year and a half, I take it, and I'm very excited about coming to this community.
Sir, if you wouldn't mind, just for, just for the record, name and address.
Oh, Fitzroy Graham, and we live at 700 Creek Road, and that's in Milton. Yeah, very good. Yeah, very. So we got a letter, and we were quite shocked at the letter because we weren't too sure what we were going to get into when we saw the letter. And then when I hear the wording of things here, it sounds like someone's going to be moving over the land that I bought, so I'm not too sure what's going on, but I'd like to, little more detail as to what, I'm not sure what's going on, and I'm confused. And I live on a road which, in front of my home, is a paved property, and at the back of it, it's a dirt road. The reason why we moved up to this area was because of that, because we could use that for various things, and behind there, equestrian area as well, which we're interested in as well. And so with that in mind, we do have traffic, and that's in Landrum. The road is Landrum. There's a lot of traffic currently now, more than what we thought we would find, but just imagining what it would be like with a paved road, I think that would be rather crazy. And so we're a little concerned about that because we already have some traffic. The other day, I saw two school buses going down there, and one crashed into my wife, taking a corner. And so I think one would have to really consider if that's a smart thing to do with the size of the roads that's there. I would suggest, as I'm a newcomer, I'm not sure if you did give out more specific information as to what would this mean, because, for example, part of my property is not more than 10, 15 feet away from the gravel road. And so I'm not sure what that means for me personally. So if you could give me information as how I could probably find out more how this would affect me and probably my neighbors on Landrum, I'd really appreciate that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Sudi, do we have any more?
We do, we do have one. Ms. Laura Bentley.
Laura Bentley, 2500 Bethany Church Road. I've followed this since August 8th and before. I think it's very clear, I support the objective of clarifying this language. I'm not sure what the current language is, though, and for sure, and I agree with many of the prior speakers, we need to pay close attention to the subdivision ordinance. we need to pay close attention to the subdivision ordinance. And I will read this. For the division of land in the AG one agricultural zoning district adjacent to or has access, please pay attention to access to unpaved roads. The following rules shall apply, three acre minimums. That's what we've been striving to clarify and that's what we need to do. We cannot lose ground on this and Hopewell cannot set a precedent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more public here?
That's all, sir.
Helen? Okay, I'll close the public hearing on this item. Kathy, come back up. Do you have anything you want to add right now or any other staff? Or we'll open it to council for questions and comments. I, I'd like to say one thing, just, and also to some folks that are maybe new here to this, this issue. This is kind of an issue that we've had, we've had similar type issues in the past that may have been brought about for one reason, but over the years, it's kind of filled another reason. And I'll use one, you know. Maybe a long time ago, we had unsued areas and, and the density was kind of controlled by that. That wasn't necessarily because the county wanted to control density. It was because the infrastructure wasn't there. Fortunately, that's, we've adjusted all that. Gravel roads back, you know, years before the city of Milton, the county did not allow, they, they had a three acre minimum on a gravel road. So someone had a lot that had access to the gravel road in order just to keep the maintenance down on the road because a gravel road wouldn't handle as much traffic. Then in turn, over time, has benefited us with our beautiful gravel roads and, and less density. But as we move forward, you know, there started to look like maybe some loop, I say loopholes, but they fit the letter of the law where if a lot fronted a paved road, they were able to have access. Now, I think it kind of got even more to our attention when people were designing lots around that to, to be able to get to the paved roads so they didn't have the three acre minimum. My concern and what I want to make sure, and we, we've got comments from both sides and we've got obviously folks that live here that want to keep the gravel roads looking like they are, at least the less amount of density we can have. We've also got folks that live on a gravel road and own property on the gravel road. They knew what they bought years ago, they knew what they've had, but want to make sure that we're not quote taking, and I know it may not be illegal taking, but adjusting what they thought they had or were able to do with it. I think we're fairly close. I think, you know, obviously it's only impacted where you have both dual frontages. But, you know, I, I think that's what we got to get clear for everybody, that this is not necessarily going and imposing new rules to take, you know, land from folks or rights from folks, but to clarify so that someone working within the confines of the ordinance can maybe have unintended consequences if that, if that makes sense. That kind of hit the.
Yes, I, I think you've, you've said it exactly, that this is clarifying language. To clarify that when, when you have property adjacent to a gravel or unpaved road, that the three acre minimum shall apply.
And, and I agree, it doesn't make, I don't think, and I'm, I'm speaking across the board for all sides. I don't think it makes, it's not fair for somebody that, let's say, has ninety percent of their land, a large chunk of land, and ninety percent of it's on a paved road, but, you know, a gravel road touches, you know, a couple of percent of it in the back. Maybe that's not fair to, to hold them to that rule. But on the flip side, you know, we've had issues where it's the opposite. Ninety percent of the land is, is on a gravel road and then they've got ten percent. So that spoils the gravel road, you know, the, the field from the gravel road. So I'm just kind of opening this up for comments and questions and thoughts from council. Karen?
Mayor, I think you're right. I think we've got to go back to what the original intent was at Fulton County. And the tenet Fulton County originally was for gravel roads to have three acre lots. And after a while, there were some developers that came in and said, well, you know, as long as it doesn't have access, the three acre lot shouldn't matter. And Fulton County kind of caved a little bit on that and allowed them to, as long as the access was from a paved road, allowed them to have a, a one acre lot adjacent to a gravel road. I think what we want to get back to is what the original intent was. And that was if there is a gravel road, if it's on a gravel road, it needs to be a three acre lot. And that being said, if somebody, ninety percent of their property is on a, you know, a paved road and they got just a little bit of gravel access and, you know, I don't think you can penalize the part of them that is on the paved road. I absolutely don't think you ought to be able to have a paved road come off a gravel road and it be deemed a paved road. I think if, if you have a road coming off a gravel road, it needs to stay a gravel road. It needs to stay the three acres and we got to make sure that that's clarified in here. But I think we need to go back to what the original intent was and that's for, to preserve the, the rural character of those roads and keep them at, at three acres minimum for each lot.
I know. And I, you know, and I appreciate that, Councilmember Thurman. I think, I, I believe that's my thoughts too and, and that's what we're, you know. I think the unintentional, unintentional consequences that we're, we're concerned about is you've got a beautiful gravel road, you've got estate homes and whatnot, and you've got a parcel that has some paved road and then they, you know, build a string of houses, you know, very close on small lots along the, maybe they're not touching the gravel road, but they're running along the edge of it. So I think that's a concern. But Joe?
So Kathy, our current ordinances, before we, before we mess with, before we try to clarify them.
Right.
We've had an ordinance that said if the lot was on a gravel road, it had to be a three acre minimum, correct?
Yes.
Now, we probably inherited, at least it looks like from the data that you sent out, we've inherited some property that's on gravel road that doesn't meet the minimum, right?
Right.
So, so those are, what do we call it, legal non-conforming?
Legal non-conforming, absolutely right.
So, so we won't worry about those right now?
That is correct. We would not worry about those.
We also had, as part of the language of the ordinance, a statement that says if you're on a paved road, the minimum is one acre.
Correct.
So, so we're not trying to restate that. All we're, I think, what I remember, what we're trying to do is clarify when a piece of property has access to both. And historically, I think, well, I can't even say historically, apparently, recently, when they had access to both, we were siding in favor of the paved road. And we were worried that that might not be the correct approach.
That is correct.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
So, so we're not trying to change what three acre lot minimums on gravel roads is or we're not trying to change what one acre lot minimums on paved roads is. We're trying to deal with, I'll call it, quote unquote, corner case, where a lot has access to both and what do we do about that?
That is correct.
And so what we were trying to say is if you have access to both, the three acre minimum would apply regardless of the amount of area that is adjacent to the paved road, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So in the presentation that you made, you included gravel road, the list of gravel roads first, and then you included some lots that were on those gravel roads. Were those, was that list of lots the list of properties that we consider sort of undeveloped or potentially could be developed or what is that list?
Let me defer to Robin. Robin, would you respond, please?
So are you speaking of who got notification?
Well, the.
The list of gravel roads?
Is, is that the list of dual frontage properties?
Yes.
Okay. So, so this is the set of properties that we think could be impacted by changing the ordinance?
Actually, the majority of them wouldn't because many of them are only three acres or less. And there's a lot of them, there's only a, maybe a handful that have large parcels like what Mr. Reese represents, a lot of those large landowners. But there's not very many, I mean.
Well, and that's the reason I brought that up was because I looked at that list and sort of got intrigued because I started seeing numbers on that list that just didn't make sense. And the number of acres on the piece of property that is adjacent to both the gravel and a paved road, I was a little bit surprised. So, so we had, we had about fifty-eight acres that are less, fifty-eight acres worth of property on that list where the individual piece of property was less than three acres. Now that means if we change the ordinance or we straighten up the ordinance so that the language is stricter, the, those properties will never be able to comply unless they're adjacent to another piece of property and they combine the property somehow. So, so we're already under the gun with a certain portion of these properties that are in Milton, right? And then there's another group of properties, it looks like about a hundred and three acres, that are less than six acres, which means they can't really be two lots because if we're going to require a three acre minimum, they can't split into two pieces that would be three acres or more. So really, we've got about a hundred and fifty acres out of three hundred and fifty acres where they're really, they can't, they can't support this. That would be legal non-conforming from the get-go.
That's right.
Okay. So really, that leaves us with about two hundred or so acres where they have the space to support the three acre minimum if they wanted to subdivide. So, so yeah, I just, I found that interesting, that a good chunk of the property that would be impacted by this ordinance don't have the option to be conforming. So maybe you could tell us what, how, how the city would manage that because obviously they're legal non-conforming today or potentially could be. And does that mean that they just don't have the option to change in the future? They just have to stay in the current state?
Well, unless they combine. Now, we do have a lot of lots. We have some on Wood Road, for instance, and, and they are less than three acres and they're legal non-conforming and they are what they are. But, you know, they, they always, I suppose, have the option of combining with an undeveloped lot next door. But they have the ability to stay as they are and that's.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So, so we've got a, the first one that's, that's less than three acres is, is on this list is one point seven acres on Black Oak Road, legal non-conforming as it sits right now, correct?
Yes.
Could they get, could they build a house on that one point seven acres?
Yes.
So, so they, so they, they can do that. When it's legal non-conforming, they can do.
Right. That's right. Because they're, they're grandfathered in. I think grandfathering is a great term. It sort of explains it.
Okay.
You're saying, because it is a lot.
It's a lot of records.
It's a lot of records, that's right.
They can build a house on it because it's, as it sits right now.
That's right. We're changing the rules this time forward if you should vote on it. But in the past, it's grandfathered.
That's what I thought it was.
Yes.
I've got some other questions when you're done.
Yeah. I just had one other question, Kathy, and that is, is it fair to say that the original intent of the language in our ordinance was functional as opposed to aesthetic? In other words, the purpose was to protect the gravel road. The purpose wasn't to create only estate lots on gravel roads. Is that, is that fair or is that a misinterpretation?
Well, I, I, I think that the, the community was looking for both. You know, it not, it's not only just a transportation issue, but the fact that the ruralness, so to speak, of the area to maintain those three acres is certainly something that they were concerned about. And it was our interpretation because of the loophole, so to speak, that was in there between the paved and the unpaved, that you were losing that, that aesthetic look on your, on your gravel roads. And I think that was part of what concerned the community, if I can speak for that.
All right. I'll, I'll say the rest of my questions for later. Bert?
Carter, Karen, Karen brought up the paved road coming off of an existing gravel road. I think we've, we've had that discussion before, that that's, that's not allowed. Is that correct?
By practice, that has not been allowed in the past. I was going through the ordinance here this evening trying to find a citation directly to a, a portion of the ordinance that would address that. I haven't found it yet. But by practice, we have not allowed paved road off of gravel road.
Okay, so that, that would in theory be a moot point.
The, the language that talked about the access to a gravel road?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The, the language that talked about the access to a gravel road?
More so the, the threat, for lack of a better term, of a paved road coming off of, in the middle of a gravel road, coming off that and having one acre lots. Is that addressed in this, in this, in this amendments that we have here?
I don't know that it's addressed in there. Typically, it would be addressed in our access ordinance that I was going back through right here to try and find it. I haven't found that language specifically yet, but it could probably be addressed in either location.
Okay.
Because that, and not to start to break in, but I think that would, that's obviously very important. So that the interpretation wasn't that someone could pave the roads internal to get by with smaller lots when the reality is those, all those homes are, are fronting the gravel road, which if you go back to the original intent, was because of the infrastructure and transportation. So, you know, I would say even if at some point it were allowed to pave an interior road into a development, if that development's on a gravel road, that it should have to follow the, the rules for the gravel road. Even, you know, like I said, even if internal road is paved, but it'd still be a three acre.
Right. We generally, paved or unpaved, we generally don't like a higher classified road to tie into a lower classified road because that road just can't support what that higher classification is.
So I, I agree with, with that, with Karen says and I think most of us do, if not all of us up here.
Does it hurt to add something here that basically says that a paved road cannot be accessed from an unpaved road or from a gravel road or singly accessed? I know there are some that may actually, you know, access part of it. Just to make sure to get rid of all the, the ambiguities in the.
I don't think it will do that.
That never hurts.
Doesn't hurt?
Bill?
I don't think that's possible. Just to clarify, all of these parcels listed here have dual frontage and they're at the intersection of gravel roads and paved roads. I count up seventy-nine properties on this list. Of those seventy-nine, fifty-two percent of them, forty-one of them are less than three acres. Most of the other ones don't vary that much from, from three acres. You have four to six acres on average. There's some that are sixty acres. Statham's property is thirty-five acres. And there, there are a lot of other, a handful of others. And of those that are less than three acres, many of them are one acre. So I would assume a lot of those do have access right off paved roads. So that's a grandfather situation, legal non-conforming. And they can continue to do that even if that lot is not developed. Question, if you have a corner lot like that and, for instance, it has ten acres, what's your interpretation of how that ten acres could be developed then?
If it's a corner lot and one side is paved and the other side is unpaved?
Right.
The idea is, is that on the unpaved side, that the definition here of the, the width of the lot is the minimum dimension shall be one hundred feet of road frontage and then each proposed lot with that one hundred foot of road frontage shall have at least two hundred feet of lot width at the building line. So that lot would have to be built. And any others that were, if it was a very long parcel, any others along there would have to meet those dimension requirements. Then if the land were wide enough, I suppose you could, you could build a road in the back, pave to pave to service the back part. But that's, I guess, how you would look at it.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
Yes.
So the way we designed this was to avoid, if you have a, a, a long enough piece along a paved road and you had the dual frontage, you couldn't create a three acre buffer, a three acre buffer strip. Because if your frontage was long enough, you'd be able, actually be able to, depending on the dimensions, create three acres that just isn't so deep. And then you would get around, once again, what it is you're trying to accomplish as a council. That's why the added language in there of the hundred feet of the road frontage and then two hundred feet of the building line is, is to prevent just that. But under the question that you have, that you have put forth, Councilmember Lusk, what we would anticipate is a picture that I, I just drew for Ken, is that, I know you can't see that. I'll try to draw it in your mind, is to be able to, any, if you were going to subdivide that, that larger lot, any lot, any, any part of the subdivision that had any adjacency whatsoever to that gravel road would have to be three acres. Once you have taken up that area of, that is adjacent to the gravel road through however many parcels that may be, it may be one, it may be five, I don't know. Anything that is no longer adjacent to that gravel road could now be one acre lots.
So you could put a subdivision literally a straight behind those one acre, and those. So you could put a subdivision literally, a straight behind those one acre, and those, those three acre lot, lots that are on the gravel road, kind of parallel to the gravel road, as long as you had the three acre lot buffer beforehand on the, the gravel?
Correct.
Yes, that's exactly right.
But we were, we were trying to avoid, if you had the, the large enough property, to avoid a strip being installed, so you can now, twenty foot off of the gravel road, you can now build. Um, a good example of where this would have been applicable would have been the, uh, the development going in at Freeman Villa Nix. Um, those, if, under what, what's being proposed, those, those lots that are adjacent to Nix should have been, would have been, uh, three acre lots. And then the other, the other parcels that are not adjacent to Nix could have been one acre. I think that's probably the best example.
Uh, let me, you know, kinda just run a scenario, fit in with this ordinance, and see if this kinda is the intent of the council, and, and I think what the community wants. You know, again, I, I believe and I, I feel that, you know, we wanna preserve the look and feel of our gravel roads. There's a, a few where you, you drive down and you look, and there's the backs of a bunch of houses where one acre lots are, are come up behind, which takes away the, the beauty and whatnot. Uh, you know, and again, if you guys can, staff and Ken can confirm this, but going back, let's say, um, the interior of gravel roads, nothing touching the, uh, a paved road. Going way back, property owners that have owned those properties, all along have had the three acre minimum zoning. So, if we're keeping that, we're not taking away or changing anything that people have come to expect, and, and since they've had their land. Is that correct?
That is correct.
You know, and again, some of the examples are where we have a, a, a paved road that meets. And I think, you know, the, the problem is, if you got just a little touch and a little bit of paved road, then does that spoil the rest of the gravel road? You know, and, and in your presentation, Kathy, you know, and to Steve's point, if a win-win, if along a gravel road, if those lots that, that are adjacent are three, three acres, so that when you're on the gravel road, you see three acre lots, but if someone has a larger piece of property, and the majority of it's on a paved road, and you could call it frontage or whatever, wherever those lots front, or whatever, but, and again, everything on the gravel road is three acres that are ja, you know, that are adjacent to the gravel road. And, and I guess we, to be careful that somebody doesn't put a sliver in there, but maybe adjacent means being the only lot, you know, up to the gravel road, even if there is a sliver there. But then the, the rest of it, that has access from the paved road, would be under AG1, the regular AG1 requirements. And, and to me, that pretty much, it, it, it takes care of everything. It, it preserves our gravel roads. It's the same rules that have been on that land since way before our time, so no surprises there. But then again, it's not penalizing someone that's ninety percent of their land is on a paved road. Does, does that make sense?
Matt? Yeah, I was just gonna follow on to Joe's comment, because it gets to the point, the point I was getting back earlier with, between functional and aesthetic. It, it solves the, um, and, and I'm not trying to diminish either one of those, but I think they're both important concepts. It conserves both the functional aspect of this, ensuring that anybody who's got primary access off the gravel road is on a three acre lot, and the aesthetic portion of that as well, is that if you live on a gravel road, you can be assured that all your neighbors are gonna be on three acre lots, unless, of course, they're one of these lots that is, you know, con, conforming.
Legal non-conforming.
Legal non-conforming.
Right, right.
But, and, and to that point, I think you can, you know, we've had some issues where, you know, you can play around and have a flag lot and whatnot, but if you had wording in there where the majority of the frontage, so that a lot, you know, let's say that there was a lot where ten percent fronted the paved road, but ninety percent paved or fronted the gravel road, that lot basically would be a frontage lot on a gravel road, and have to have the three, the three acre minimum rule. Does that make sense? That way, you know, if somebody tried to do a flag lot and have it touch the paved part, but that goes around from the back of the house or something, then it kicks it out, so that there's no, no gains. Bill, did you have, or Matt, did you have something?
No, I'm just...
Maybe to ask Ken, uh, in going back to my example, where you had a lot that's, say, ten acres, and, uh, it was possible to develop a three acre parcel along the gravel road that also fronted on the paved road. Just to be clear, in my mind, the remaining seven acres then, which totally fronted on the, uh, paved road, would fall under the one acre minimum. Is that correct?
That is clearly what is being proposed, and that is clearly what staff has brought to you, or what they wanted to bring to you is that. Because you remember, we had this discussion
Right.
about the notion of, if it touches the gravel, does that permeate throughout the entire ten acres, and therefore mean that they have to have three acre minimums throughout the balance of the property going far back? And I think the council, to your credit, said, "That's not the way this needs to work." And so that's why this different language was brought to you.
Basically tied into frontage.
Just to be clear.
So my question to Ken, my, my question to Ken was, did we accomplish that with this, uh, with this language? Because I'm still having trouble un, understanding that, that we didn't.
And let me make a statement too, if you don't mind, cause to me, it seems like it could be a simple solution. Now, I'd say, say that respectfully, cause we, you know, everybody's been working hard on. Is that something that we can bring back, you know, with that intent?
The only thing I might recommend is, because these terms become so important when we begin to interpret them, is we might think about perhaps a better definition of adjacent, to make sure that that is not lost in translation. Because I think what it is intended to mean is literally almost physical touching the gravel road. But, I mean, I've been a lot, around a lot of, regrettably, attorneys in my life, and I know that, uh, that, uh, that can sometimes, you know, words are important, is the point. And I don't want, you know, the, the own, the, the, the unforgivable sin in this situation is now that we know the will of the council to not nail it in this code revision. And I wonder if perhaps ensuring we have a rock solid definition of adjacency to, to implement the will of the council is not where we need to be.
And, and I'd like to just say too, you know, my intention would be to, as we've talked about clarifying, but also for all parties involved, folks that live on a gravel road, you know, we're not changing the rules on anybody. We're not changing on landowners. We're clarifying it, but we're also, again, preserving the fact that when you drive down a gravel road, you're gonna see, you know, beautiful gravel road with, with, uh, low density lots on it.
Well, and, and the council, to be commended, because, you know, when this debate discussed, started, it was, uh, kind of a debate arising out of one issue. And that seemed like an easy issue to address, but what you've done is you've kind of gone through the hypotheticals of where does this end when you get into perhaps different scenarios that are not what drove this original debate. And that is the larger lots now. Is the three acre minimum gonna, gonna permeate throughout the int, and that's what you all are attempting to address.
I think we need to tie this to, what do you see when you drive down a gravel road?
Right.
Rich, any word?
I guess a question, Ken. Just looking up the definition, does a buts make more sense than adjacent?
Yes.
Cause it says, "Touch or lean upon, um, an area of land or building next to, or have a common, common boundary with." Just wondering if you can, if, if you, from a legal standpoint, if we wanted to make sure we clarify it, let's just do away with any ambiguity, if there is a word that suits both the legal definition as well as what we're trying to say.
I would tend to think that a buts might be a little, a little closer.
Okay. Bill?
Contiguous, uh, appropriate.
Contiguous, plenty of precedent for that in the annexation context, you know what that means, is to be contiguous. So all of those will be on the table, if that's what the council's rights.
Well, we went through that, uh, certainly, when we incorporated
Absolutely.
and tried to, uh, include contiguous properties
Correct.
on our southern border.
Yeah.
And just kind of more of a, a big picture type question as well, and, and Joey, you were talking about earlier about, about property rights. I think that's important that we go into that, but, um, Carter, what's our history? Obviously, we had a lot of gravel roads in this area for some time, and then they were paved at some point in time. About when were most of the roads in the northern end of our community paved? If you don't mind my asking.
I wouldn't have any idea. You mean our main roads, like Hopewell?
Well, like, you know, we've had residents come out here and talk about Birmingham Road, for example. Um, and, and the idea was to stop paving them, get them back to gravel roads. And that was just mentioned by residents who'd been here and remembered when they were gravel, at that point in time. Because I think it goes a little bit to Karen's point about, you know, part of the law with Fulton County was, we had more gravel roads at some point in time. Is that correct?
I'm sure it is.
Well, I know at the time that Fulton County absorbed Milton County, there was not a single paved road in Milton County at that time.
Nineteen thirty.
Yeah. There was not a paved road there then.
A long time ago, yeah.
So, and I'm sure Fulton County didn't rush and go pave all the roads immediately. It was done over time.
Well, at that point, most of the homes in that were three, three acres, on that, obviously. So that was the question. And then as paved roads started in, coming in, then you had more one acre lot opportunities for current landowners, right? That's kinda what I'm getting at. So I wanna make sure we understand, um, you know, property rights is extremely important to me when I make this vote. And obviously, we asked some questions about what is opportune and what is not. Another question is, is maybe Kathy, you can answer this, or Robin, I don't know. But, you know, how are home sales going, or developments going with regards to three acre estate lots versus one acre homes? Uh, we had a one subdivision, I think, Little River, that was doing large lots, and then they regressed to one acre lots at some point, because the larger ones were not selling. And, you know, that's a question. That is a legitimate concern, I think, that some landowners need to have, that if we tell them, "You're gonna have to have some three acre lot, eh, you know, homes." You know, they, we're, we, as a council, are deciding on property that may not sell, that they would have to have. And that's just a question that we have to make sure we're answering, you know, from a market perspective, because there's talking about two different products, one acre homes versus three acre homes.
Don't make it for clarification, and Joe, I, I think, I believe what we're talking about is, the only ones you're gonna confine to a three acre would be something that was already prior to three acre, we're not turning to additional.
Right, 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 right. Exactly, exactly. I mean, so, but, but in some landowner's mind who spoke today, um, they have a concern that, um, if they had a, homes on that property, um, and then we, if according to them, they think that they can connect to a paved road, that they should be able to do one acre homes on the entirety of that property. And we're talking about taking some of those and make them not able to do that, essentially, which will then change evaluation for that particular aspect of their land. I mean, that is the truth of what we're doing. So, just wanna make sure that we are taking that into consideration as well.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're communicating the right thing. We're not, we're not changing the spirit of the ordinance that we have. The ordinance has always stated that one acres minimums for paved roads, three acre minimums for gravel roads.
Right.
We're clarifying in a certain number of cases where there's a commonality between those two things, and there, and, and therefore the density is open for interpretation.
Exactly.
So, so we're not, we're not making any decisions that are gonna change anybody's evaluation of their property.
Well, it depends on those people that are on those corner lots. They're, they're the ones that are having those concerns. And so I think that's obviously what we're talking about here, so I'm just trying to...
Bill, and then I wanna make a statement, see if you can...
Oh, just a point of reference, since, uh, Matt asked the question of, you had the discussion this morning with Norman Broadwell and County Mashburn. Red Road and Thompson Road, two examples, were not paved until the late fifties, early sixties, so.
Is that, exactly.
Just reinforce.
Yeah, I think mine was like seventies.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get a frame of reference.
I'm gonna ask a question, counsel, try to simplify this, but also ask staff to weigh in, is, would it be safe to say the will of council would be to, one, protect the look of the gravel roads as though the, as the existing ordinance is, where any lot on a gravel road is three acres? But then again, not to, um, take away any rights of somebody that has a, you know, that's land is maj, is, is on a paved road also, but by doing that, specifying that every lot that touches, and we can use all these different words, but touches the gravel road has a three acre minimum. That way, if somebody has a long piece on a paved road, they can develop AG1 over here, but every lot that touches the gravel road is three acre minimum, so that the net result is, on our paved roads, you know, the AG1, it could look like, uh, unallowable neighborhoods that are, that are built, the rest of Milton. But as you drive down a gravel road, both existing and new, you have three acre lots. Uh, you know, would that be the intent of council, and could staff, legal and all that, tie that up in the or, you know, the, the text amendments to...
I'll take a, I'll take a shot at that. I think the answer's, first of all...
Well, let me, let me ask, is that the intent of council first?
Fair enough.
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, nice.
Alright, so, first of all, I, I understand. I, I understand. I, I do concur, Councilmember Morek. I think I like a buts better than adjacent. And this may be one of those rare instances, I was telling the city manager, where candidly, in the code, a, a diagram might be appropriate to further depict what exactly is, is, is the intention. And that's a fairly common drafting tool, showing the gravel intersecting with the pave, showing that the three acres of abutting, the gravel would be three, and then the further back, it could be the, the typical AG1 at one acre. And, uh, so I think, given that, if we could substitute adjacent with the buts, with the direction that it should include a diagram reflecting what I just, just depicted to you, I think I would be comfortable with the council moving forward this evening.
Okay. And also just a question, clarify, cause I wanna make sure that we are not, as a city, taking rights away from anybody with existing properties, and make sure we're comfortable with that too. Bill, you got it?
Maybe along with that, uh, suggestion, Ken, and the diagram, uh, there may be some special cases out there right now. And I'm thinking probably the statums property up on Hickory Flat Road. So, you may wanna spend a little more time, uh, ma, in ensuring that we're, uh, not stepping into something, I guess, if, if we're trying to come up with a hard and fast rule, that there still may be exceptions, uh...
You know, to Bill's point, there may be, and it's probably only a handful, if that, of properties that would fit into that. You know, could we have a clause in there where, if it is a special property, it could come back to the council for some sort of...
Well, I, you know, typically, that would fall under the definition of, of what, of variance, you know, tip, to the extent that there is an extraordinary hardship or something unusual, top, topographically about the, the property, we could look at a variance.
So that would come before the BZA, not before the council?
That's true.
Is there a way for it to come before the council, or variances for that, just that particular item?
Of course.
Just because, to make sure that the BZA may not know the intent of the council is to, you know, protect everybody.
They may not have listened to our six months' worth of council discussions concerning it.
Well, you have, and, and if the council's on board with that, do you have, you know, are we at a point where you could recommend some verbiage and with staff?
Well, I don't know that I am in a position, and nor could I recommend that we tweak the variance language. I mean, I think that would need to come back as a separate item, if we wanna start modifying the variance rules with respect to this. But that's simply, and that could be done fairly quickly, but again, you have a handout in front of you, I think, that should be in red and blue and yellow. I think that's what the council has in front of you for consideration. The only changes I would make would be to change the word adjacent on E2 such that it reads "three acres abutting an unpaved road." That's the only difference that I would recommend. And then I would want the council to give direction at the point, when they make the motion, that the city attorney work with staff to add a diagram reflecting what has been discussed this evening.
So, Ken, just to make sure I understand, you're saying we could prove this with the change in language that you just said, and with the request that staff add a diagram, and we can vote on this tonight, and not kick the can further down the road, as one citizen?
That is precisely what I'm saying, yes.
Okay.
Cool. But then also, we're not, you know, we're not changing the rules, we're just defining the rules.
That, that's, that's correct. I mean...
Except in the dual frontage, but, you know, still being, to be fair, both sides.
Dual frontage, but, but those, but those parcels that are gonna be abutting the, the gravel road.
But we wanna be fair, again, to, you know, both the intent of the citizens, but also to the property.
Yes.
Karen?
Are you comfortable with the fact that they're not gonna put a paved road subdivision off a gravel road? Or do we need to add a letter in to this that basically states that a paved road subdivision cannot be come off of, of the gra, or if it does come off the gravel road, it has to adhere to the three acre minimum?
But I guess that...
Carter, I think you had some terminology for that, but...
Well, that would go back to the access language that was in there. If we wanted to add that back in, a buts, or has access to...
Or is primary access is from?
I don't know if I would say primary access, because you could have a secondary access off the back that, uh, could serve the same function that you would wanna capture.
I just wanna make sure that somebody doesn't come in and put a large paved road subdivision off of a gravel... I just want to make sure that somebody doesn't come in and put a large paved road subdivision off of a gravel road.
And, and if it's, and again, to clarify that, that would be assuming someone on a, fully on a gravel road came in and developed a neighborhood, and put a paved road inside and said, oh, I can do one acre lots. That doesn't even fit with the original ordinance where it was about infrastructure, and, you know, you wanted less densities because of the maintenance on the road. So, obviously, just, that could be pretty simple, wouldn't it, that you can't take a higher level of a, um, structure or road, whatever you call it, and put it on a lower level and expect to get the same density on the higher level?
And I think the access to the road also covers that, because if the lots internal to whatever property you're subdividing have access to that gravel road, they're required to be three acres. You then lose that incentive to try and argue the paved road portion of it.
Okay, Joe.
Well, I just want to make sure we're not changing something here. I mean, can, can somebody build off a, a gravel road today, put a paved road into whatever they're building on, and develop one acre lots?
Not by practice.
I think that's where we need to consider, separate and apart from this, maybe entering that and, uh, uh, taking practice, changing it to code, and I think that would be under streets, correct?
Correct. So, I think the access language that existed, uh, in the ordinance, um, adjacent or butts and/or has access to, would resolve that, um, initially, and then we can further clarify that in, um, our streets section later on.
Right, and I just, because I just wanted to make sure we're sticking to what the spirit of this change was supposed to be about. And it was supposed to be about the issue where there was both paved and unpaved roads, adjacent, or butts, whatever we use.
I think we're gonna accomplish that with the language that's, uh, that, that Ken just recommended, uh, with the instruction that has, I believe, has come back from you regarding, uh, looking at our, our street code, and making sure that nobody can do precisely what, um, what the council member brought up. I will, I will tell you, I'm, I, I agree with what you're attempting to do. I'm a little uncomfortable, though, making the or has access to on the fly in light of how precise we're trying to draft this. I'm just afraid we're gonna cause more, particularly since we're talking about doing a diagram to reflect this. So, it may, maybe the way that, you know, Carter and, and, and the city manager and I can, can figure it out with, with Kathy. Um, it, it may not be doable right now. I'm, I'm struggling to think of how you could do a paved road on top of a gravel road, and that'd be appropriate.
But that could be done.
Yes, could be codified, yes, very good.
Codified later.
I think it's important.
I, I, I concur.
Yeah, I think it's important, too.
I concur.
Okay, so, do we feel comfortable legally and staff-wise that we can, can, uh, approve something tonight that meets the intent?
I, I do, based upon the discussion that I've heard and the verbiage that I'm comfortable with, and candidly, I, I do like the diagram. I think that is gonna go forward.
Does anyone make, make a motion?
Well, I just may clarify something as well, because you said, you used the term fair a couple of times. I just make sure I understand. So, obviously, if we are having just three acres on the gravel road, which is fine, but fairness is on the back end with AG one. Is that what you're talking about, just keep the same number of lots with AG one, three acre lots? So, it is a reduction of homes if they're considering it, you know, if they were exiting, exiting off a paved road. That is an exit, reduction of homes. So, I just want to make sure we understand that it is a reduction of homes. Um, so, that's the, um, that's what we're talking about here. Um, so, that's what you're talking about, right? Okay.
Personally, I do not believe it's a reduction of homes based on the initial intent of the Fulton County ordinance.
Three acres for everything that's on a gravel road.
And I suggest we don't try to tackle the putting in a, a paved road coming off from a dirt road, and I think you need to.
I think that's later, we're talking about, we can tackle that one later. Okay, does anyone want to make a motion? Mike?
Did I say something? Yes, okay.
Karen, you have?
Mayor, I move that we, uh, approve, uh, RZ sixteen dash zero seven, agenda item number sixteen dash two eight two, with the change that we use the term a butts instead of, uh, adjacent to, and that staff include a diagram to help us understand the, uh, particular conditions that we're trying to cover in this ordinance.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion as read by Councilmember Longoria, a second by Councilmember Thurman. Um, Ken, I would ask for you to comment on that.
I just did. I just wanted to clarify, and Councilmember Longoria, thank you, but, and with respect to the diagram, the diagram would capture the, the scenarios we've gone over this evening to, to show the, the three acre subdivision abutting the gravel with the balance of a larger tract left to AG one.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, just, uh, can we just clarify what that sentence is? Is it gonna be, just to make sure it's grammatically correct, because I heard you say abutting. I mean, we've got little crosses. Can you read the first part of that?
Two, two thoughts. Number one, first of all, I'm assuming the maker of the motion intends it to be derived from what was handed out this evening.
Correct.
And secondly, y- y- yes, three acres abutting an unpaved road. Thank you.
Ken?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Ken, got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I, I think when we have the cases like this, um, in the future, maybe starting out with an illustration would probably answer a lot of questions, um, and that, that sort of thing.
Understood, understood.
Okay. All right, Sudi, if you'll call our next item.
Our next item is consideration of RZ sixteen zero eight to amend the definitions regarding paved and unpaved roads in chapter sixty-four, article one, section sixty-four dash one definitions, agenda item number sixteen two eight three. First presentation was at the December fifth council meeting and discussed at the December twelfth council work session. This was deferred at the December nineteenth council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you. Um, by way of background, these definitions were presented at the Planning Commission meeting of October twenty-sixth, and then, um, went on to the, their meeting of November the sixteenth. And they did, um, propose some amendments, and we did incorporate those amendments into the two proposed definitions you have before you. And specifically, um, they recommended, uh, approval of the amendment to the definition except, to the definition section except that within the definition of gravel road, to include the list of unpaved roads as listed. And you have that attached, unpaved road list. In addition, they recommended that in the, in the definition of unpaved road to add with the list of unpaved roads, and include the map cited in the definition. These changes are reflected in the, in attached text amendment. Um, so they are before you. We did present it to you all, um, at the work session of December the twelfth. And you see before you the two proposed definitions that relate to the item that we just, or that you, you just approved as it relates to gravel roads and unpaved roads.
Okay. Sudi, do we have any public comment on this?
Yes, sir, we have eight public comment cards.
Okay.
First one comes from Daniel Fernandez.
Okay.
Okay, our next one comes from Laura Bentley.
She's passing, too.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, please call her next.
Scott Reese.
Okay, let her pass, thank you. Um, Sudi, please call next.
Tom Statham.
Yes, I'm Tom Statham, own the same property as a minute ago. Uh, the intersections of both of those gravel roads are terribly dangerous into the paved road that the traffic runs anywhere from thirty-five to seventy miles an hour by there, and the school buses come in and out. Is it the city's idea to improve intersections like that at some later time, even though they're gravel? Because the school bus comes for forty years, right around Row Road. So, anyway, it's just something to think about. The life safety issue here must be somewhere in Milton's agendas.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sudi, any more public comment?
Next one is Jody Martin.
Just one additional comment. I'm, I'm still the property, yes.
Just for the record.
Jody Martin, one five three five oh Thompson Road. Uh, I have paved road on the front of my property, the frontage of my property for my driveway is Thompson. And then my entire property line runs along a gravel road, which is Burgess Road. Um, the only thing I would say for you to consider is some gravel roads may have portions that are paved, uh, and you need to think about that. For instance, Burgess Road, as you're turning off of Thompson onto Burgess, probably the first fifty feet of that is paved. Then it goes to gravel, and then there's a road that comes off of Hopewell Road to take you to Burgess, which is gravel, and a portion of that is paved, and a portion of that is unpaved, and that's probably a hundred and fifty feet long. So, when you're talking about definitions of gravel roads, you need to consider that at some point in time, portions of a gravel road have been paved. And I would just encourage you to consider that when you're looking at your definitions, because gravel roads may not be entirely gravel, and you may have a loophole there where someone says, oh, but the first hundred feet, and that's where my driveway is, so, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, thank you. Sudi, do you have any more public comment?
Yes, we do. Uh, Ms. Dot Epperson?
I believe she may have stepped out. Okay. Sudi, do we have any more?
We do. Ben Statham?
Mr. Statham, Ben, did you still have a comment? Would you like to make a comment?
No, the comment was the same about the gravel road and intersection. Is the city liable for the danger when it happens?
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Um, Sudi, do we have any more public?
We do. Fitzroy Graham?
Fitzroy Graham, seven hundred Creek Road. Um, the, my property is between Freeman Ville on the front, and at the back is Landrum. And my comment is whether or not, uh, we're looking into, or has anyone looked at the flow of traffic in that area? And the, um, because of the width of the road, and, um, is anyone doing anything about checking to see if we have more traffic than what we should have in that area? And the, um, security that, uh, the gentleman mentioned there about, especially with school bus, buses. The other thing was, um, regarding, um, the question as to grandfathering. When you have like a property I have, that's on the corner, exactly abutting, um, which is on the list of the forty-two percent that the gentleman mentioned, is that what you call a grandfathered-in property?
Let me say this, too, and this goes for everybody, public comment. You know, our rules are, it's public comment, but the question is not question and answer. But anybody that's had public comment that's looking for an answer, feel free to email me, or, or any of the council, on the staff, and we will get back with you, and we'd be glad to explain everything that's pertaining to your lot and to the other issues that are brought up. So, we definitely want to address those, but public comment, we don't go back and forth.
Okay, so let me make it general, then.
Sure.
A comment. Uh, the forty-one properties that were mentioned, that you mentioned there, are those grandfathered-in? Are that's, is that the kind of property we're dealing with? Because you've put it on your list. And so, uh, the, the question was, is the list that you have a grandfathered-in list? And you'll give me an email on that, is that right? I'll contact you.
And I'll be glad to respond to, to, yeah, anyone or any communication.
In other words, the, the, the information that you have, we would love to have that information to know how you define that kind of property for newcomers especially. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay.
And that's, that's the final public comment on that item.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing on that, and then open back up with Kathy and any questions from council.
Bill, you have your hand up?
To address Ms. Martin's, um, question, I think, confirm it.
Yes, I, I would like to read for you the proposed definition for gravel road. It says as follows, gravel road means an unpaved road surfaced with gravel material and may have a paved extension that is constructed and maintained to function as an all-weather surface for vehicular and pedestrian travel, and is synonymous with unpaved road. These gravel roads include the following, and then the, the list of gravel roads that is, um, is included in here.
And, and I'm wondering if we're gonna have, because, again, just so that there's no, we've had this issue before, if a certain portion is paved, um, either by mistake or, or, or not, um, you know, maybe to where, if the majority of the road is not asphalt, or it is, is tr, is gravel, then it class, it, it clarifies that it's a gravel road. Does that make sense? Not good words, but, uh, where I'm getting at is if we have a gravel road, and you've got some spots that somebody has paved, or they've paved fifty or a hundred feet on it, or whatever, but the majority of the road is gravel, then that, per definition, is a gravel road.
Isn't it, any road on the list is a gravel road, on the gravel road list is a gravel road?
That's what, yes.
So, okay, that's pretty clear.
Rick?
And I guess to the, the, Mr. Statham's question earlier, with this new definition, it doesn't prohibit us from trying to make safety improvements at the intersection where we've got, let's say we need to do, there needs to be some paving. It doesn't change the categorization of that road from gravel to a paved road.
I think Carter would be the appropriate.
I think that's correct.
Okay.
All right, Bill?
Just further on that point, that's something we did about, uh, five or six years ago. We, uh, put a paved section on the gravel road, uh, immediately where it intersects the paved road. And that was for, uh, safety issues, runoff, gravel going into the paved areas, and it's been pretty effective. That's, uh, that's part of the definition that's, uh, included.
And I guess actually, I think we've got a number of those that were done by Fulton County or whatever that were changed, so that we, because we used to have gravel road, gravel, and people would slide out into the paved road, which is high-speed traffic. But this doesn't prohibit us from doing intersection improvements at that intersection of the gravel road going forward, where we need to for safety reasons.
Okay, Bert?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve agenda item sixteen dash two eight three. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval. Councilmember Hewitt, second, from, uh, Councilmember McCoon's. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Excuse me, moving on to our next, to the next agenda item. Sudi, please make, call the item.
Next item is consideration of RZ sixteen dash zero five to create steep slope standards in chapter sixty-four, article seventeen, division three, site improvement standards. Agenda item number seventeen zero zero nine. First presentation was at January ninth, two thousand seventeen council meeting. This was discussed at the January eighteenth council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna defer to Court of Lucas on this.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, tonight, we're gonna ask that we defer this item back to Planning Commission, and, um, as soon as this presentation comes up. Um, the, the reason I'm asking for this is there's some ad, added language that the Planning Commission wanted to have, uh, included in this regarding the ridge lines. Um, keeping in mind that the ridge line section came from a model ordinance that primarily discussed ridge lines as they related to the community from, um, large, high ridge lines overlooking the entire community that were, um, an important component of that. Um, and the way that it's defined in the ordinance currently is that a ridge line means the line formed by the meeting of the tops of sloping surfaces of the land, which is a pretty broad definition. And I'll give you an example of how that, uh, is causing us some, uh, issues from the administrative component. The one piece of the ordinance talks about, uh, the relationship of the building and roof line to a ridge line, and that the roof line should not exceed more than two feet, uh, above the ridge line, which is, um, great and easy to administer in a location where you have high and prominent ridge lines. Um, in our case, we've got much more rolling terrain, um, and under the broad definition of that ridge line, um, any of these rolling areas could be covered under that ridge line. And you can end up with a situation where you physically cannot fit the building on the site and maintain the roof line within two feet of that ridge line. If you were to look at a piece of property, this is actually the piece of property adjacent to us, um, you can see the red lines identify a number of ridge lines that, uh, could be considered under the existing ordinance. But I don't believe the intent of the Planning Commission was to protect these individual ridge lines on a piece of property. Um, part of the ordinance, if you'll remember from last week's discussion, required that each individual building site have a twenty-five percent. each individual building site have a twenty-five percent or less building pad under existing topographical conditions, which creates a little bit of a competing factor when you start talking about protecting the ridge lines and pushing the buildings down the ridge line, when in fact, that ridge line may be the location where you need to build a building. And in fact, you may still be able to protect that ridge line even though you're putting the home on there, that there are ways to construct or conceal the ridge line to meet the intent of what I believe the Planning Commission's discussion was. And so tonight, for that reason, we would like to go back to Planning Commission to clarify that language and/or the definition of ridge lines, and then bring the ordinance back to you in its entirety.
Okay. Now, we may, we do have advertised public hearing, so we, is the council okay with the recommendation? Well, let's hear a public comment first, and then open that up. Sudi, do we have public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. First one comes from Mr. Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, one five sixty-five Canterbury Chase. I am speaking tonight in favor of the steep slopes ordinance. Staff has done an excellent job with the ordinance. As staff pointed out, many municipalities have such an ordinance. Oddly, Fulton County's steep slope ordinance did not carry over to Milton. Furthermore, staff used a model steep slope ordinance as a guide. Increasingly, our city needs to seek out and implement best practices in governance. I advocate keeping the twenty-five percent slope threshold. This aligns with Randall Arant's recommendations for land conservation. This is the same Randall Arant that CSO advocates are so fond of referencing. In fact, Arant would argue for an even stricter ordinance where no development would be permitted on land with more than twenty-five percent slope, and that such unbuildable land should never be counted as conserved land. I applaud staff for their excellent work on this ordinance, and I urge council with the changes that were recommended by Mr. Lucas to approve the ordinance proposed by staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Ms. Laura Bentley.
Laura Bentley, twenty-five hundred Bethany Church Road. Think it's a great idea to go back to planning for the ridges. I just wanted to ask staff, since you do get some more time, and we know this is important, we don't have a steep slope ordinance, so we know this needs to be a priority, but we do need to get it right. We were all appalled with the reserve at Providence when we saw that forty percent of those lots needed variances. So my question is, does twenty-five percent in the standard for, as the slope, the proposed slope, does that solve the problem with what we, with what they came forward to make the lots buildable by our standards? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi?
Next comes Mr. Scott Reese.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Scott Reese, doing business at one three six eight five Highway nine, Milton, Georgia. Once again, I feel like I have to represent the few property owners that are left. The city has been developed anywhere from eighty-five to ninety percent. With the existing rules, there are erosion control and site plan guidelines that dictate how the property can be developed. It doesn't seem to have been a major problem in the past. The subdivision referenced, they made a mistake, and they're paying for the mistake. Those houses haven't been paid. Council and Planning Commission have not rolled over. My recommendation, and I think I've discussed with you in the past, is that thirty-five percent should be our threshold instead of twenty-five percent. Four feet and one, it's a vast majority of the city. On a state level and federal level, that is not considered a steep slope. We put septic fields on twenty-five percent slopes. We only move into extreme erosion control measures at slopes greater than three to one. So with that in mind, I think the twenty-five percent, though it's a random, you know, very good sounding number from a scientific standpoint, I think we need to look at it as a true number instead of just a pulled-out-of-the-air number. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, do we have any more public comment?
We have two more, sir. And that's Mr. Tom Statham.
I'm Tom Statham again, from the same area, Row Road and Clarity Road. But with eighty percent possibly already developed to the county, maybe some of the roads that are, the properties that are left are on the steeper Little River area or another big creek. I think it's being, again, punishing the people that own those to have such a low standard at this late date. So I agree with Scott that this would be better to have a higher percentage, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you please call the next speaker.
And the last speaker is Mr. Ben Statham.
Okay. Statham wants to pass on that. So I will close the hearing, and again, our staff has recommended deferral, or defer it, or taking it back to Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
Do you recommend a date to bring it back, or reschedule that after it goes to Planning Commission?
It would be the first available meeting after the Planning Commission meeting. I don't know what, I don't know what that is.
For a motion, do we need, do we need a date on that?
February?
Yeah, that needs to be. All right, so when would the Planning Commission?
It would have to be in March. It could be the first meeting in March would be the soonest.
Okay.
Can it be a first meeting, or does it need to be the third meeting? Because thirds typically.
Do we need to do the second meeting of the month?
There's no, there's just tradition.
Okay. All right, so I'll open up for comments or a motion. If someone makes a motion to defer it, then, what's that, March sixth, the first meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Matt, Karen, did?
That's okay.
This is a motion, okay.
I'm down here at the end.
Matt, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we defer Agenda Item number seventeen dash zero zero nine to March sixth.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for deferral, March sixth, from Councilmember McCoon, second, by Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Sudi, will you please call the next item?
Next item is consideration of RZ sixteen ten, to amend the rural Milton overlay single-family uses height section sixty-four dash one one four one C, Agenda Item number seventeen zero one zero. First presentation was at the January ninth council meeting. This was discussed at the January eighteenth council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Mayor. By way of background, the City Council approved a retaining wall ordinance on November twenty-first, limiting the height of retaining walls, including those attached to single-family homes. There is now a potential for new homes to exceed the building height to compensate for the required maximum six-foot-high retaining walls. Therefore, staff has proposed an amendment to the required height for single-family uses within the rural Milton overlay to limit the amount of height credit that would apply to steep slope applications, depending on each individual lot. Staff has included a series of graphics to illustrate possible building height scenarios and how the height credit is applied. Now, we did bring this proposed text amendment to the Planning Commission on December twenty-eighth, and they unanimously approved it, and then we brought it to you all to a council work session on January eighteenth, and you were at that time in support of any proposed changes. You're in support of the proposed changes as presented. Happy to answer any questions. The city architect is also here as well to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Sudi, do we have any public comment on this?
We do have two, sir.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, let's have our public comment, and then...
First comment is from Mr. Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, one five sixty-five Canterbury Chase. I'll keep my comments brief. I am speaking tonight in favor of the building height restrictions for the Milton's rural overlay. Staff has done an excellent job with this ordinance. It preserves the rural aesthetic of Milton while providing sufficient flexibility to developers to achieve their objectives. I think Milton is fortunate to have a city architect that is so passionate about his work, and who is working tirelessly on behalf of citizens to protect what makes Milton so special. I urge council to approve the proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you please call the next speaker.
And our final speaker is Ms. Laura Bentley.
Laura Bentley, twenty-five hundred Bethany Church Road. I also support the recommendation of our city architect to limit the maximum acceptable wall height. The discussion last Monday night was very helpful, and it's great to have them advocating for the look and feel of Milton. And it was also mentioned that this was not considered a taking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and then open the floor back up to Kathy and any questions from council or comments. Do we have anything from council? If not, I'll open up for a motion. Karen?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item number seventeen dash zero one one, consideration of RZ sixteen, no, consider, I'm sorry, Agenda Item seventeen dash zero one zero, consideration of RZ sixteen dash ten to amend the rural Milton overlay single-family uses height section.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Thurman, second, with Councilmember Morick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimous. So we'll move on to our next zoning agenda items. Sudi, if you wouldn't mind repeating that item.
Consideration of RZ sixteen eleven, to amend the Crab Apple Form-Based Code as it relates to building units allowed for parking structures. Article nineteen of the zoning ordinance, Agenda Item number seventeen zero one one. First presentation was at the January ninth meeting, discussed at the January eighteenth council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By way of background on this item, within the Crab Apple Form-Based Code, when a parking structure is constructed, the ordinance allows for a density bonus of two building units per one parking space created within a parking structure. One building unit equals either one residential unit, no matter what the size, or twenty-two fifty square feet of non-residential space. As the ordinance reads currently, there is no maximum cap on the number of density bonus units one can utilize. In order to eliminate development that does not meet the vision for the Crab Apple area, staff has proposed a density cap that would be the same as the density cap that we use for transfer of development rights. For instance, in the T-five zone, the allowed density is nine units per acre by right, and the density allowed with the use of TDR credits is fourteen units per acre. Should this text amendment be approved, density bonuses when a parking structure is included will be capped at the fourteen unit per acre as well. This went to the Planning Commission at their December meeting, and they unanimously approved it, and then this was also discussed at the council work session on January eighteenth. Thank you.
All right. Sudi, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, sir, we do have three cards. The first one comes from Cleveland Slater.
Cleveland Slater, thirteen six seventy Bethany Road, Milton. First, let me say I am not up to speed on this issue. I generally do not speak on issues I'm not familiar with, but there's some things here I want to address, and hopefully some questions get answered as we discuss this item. First, I don't understand why a developer would get a density bonus for deciding to build a vertical parking structure versus using a horizontal parking lot. If the density is increased on the track, on the parcel, more parking spaces, more parking spaces are required. But it seems this allows the developer to build more stuff without building more parking spaces. What happens when you don't build sufficient parking spaces for your uses? People park in the streets, people park in the neighborhoods. You might be familiar with some areas in town, a really popular restaurant where people crowd the streets because there's not sufficient parking. So the decision to build flat or vertical just doesn't seem to match with a density bonus. Again, the number of parking spaces needs to be determined by the use of the property. DeKalb County has eight pages of regulations that dictate how many spaces are required by the use. Now, we may have that here too, I don't know. So again, where I'm a little bit not as up to speed as I would like to be. But single-family homes, you need two parking spaces. Apartment or condo, one and a half. A restaurant is a hundred fifty, one space for a hundred fifty square feet. You pack people in the restaurant, so you need more parking for them. Retail gets one space, requires one space for five hundred square feet. Hopefully, we got that in our ordinance, but this bonus for more space and more stuff because you build a parking deck troubles me. And again, I'm sorry, because I don't understand, there may be something else that I'm missing, but hopefully, I certainly support the cap, but I'm not sure that we should even have a bonus in consideration. I think, I'm sorry, I kind of rushed through that, but hopefully, I addressed the concern, and certainly nothing wrong with imposing a cap, but we might want to revisit what the real consequences of having a density bonus is if we don't have sufficient requirements for parking spaces to accommodate the increased density. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Rory Taylor.
Hi, my name is Rory Taylor, six one six Brandon Trail. I've had several emails bounce back and forth in the last forty-eight hours regarding Crab Apple. I'd like to just note that there was a publicly-held meeting November thirtieth that actually talked about the topic of development, including parking structures. It was clear at that meeting that the public voiced significant concerns with parking, traffic, and then parking garages, parking decks. Here today, we're talking about density and actually parking decks in, within the Crab Apple development. I'd like to highlight, on that November thirtieth meeting, there was significant opposition to parking decks. That meeting was posted online, is currently right in this deck right here, and on page fifty, that feedback was not included by the public regarding parking decks. I am personally opposed to this, and I would ask that the City Council have an open meeting, include the commentary from the general public, revisit this discussion at another time and date. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi, if you please.
And one last comment from Julie Zoner Bailey.
My name is Julie Zoner Bailey, and I reside at two fifty-five Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia, three thousand and four. Some of my comments start at a general level and hopefully get a little bit more specific. Generally speaking, I would say that it appears that the density in Crab Apple is steadily increasing, perhaps exponentially increasing, and reaching far beyond what was ever intended with the Crab Apple overlay, which many of us obviously were a part of historically, have lived in Crab Apple, have driven through Crab Apple. I've been out in the area for thirty years. I know that you guys, many of you have lived here equally as long, along with families and other folks. Generally, I'm quite perplexed by some of the density that I'm suddenly seeing, that I know part of that transitioned when we developed the Form-Based Code. I'd, one, like to ask that as part of this analysis, that somewhere, staff provide, or maybe staff is helpful and could provide, where it originally started with density that was allowable in Crab Apple, under the Fulton County-approved, and then the City of Milton adopted Crab Apple overlay, how that then transferred mathematically from that density that was then going to be allowed under Form-Based Code, to then the third stage, which I think is going to be coming before you, separate from this evening's item, but with the additional plans. It seems that Crab Apple has morphed, and I recognize that there's been a decision by council to have Crab Apple be a destination, but I feel like we've lost a sense of where we began, where citizens were willing to accept us to go, and how it's suddenly morphing. And I think it's morphing without a lot of math that citizens are firmly aware of. It's concerning, not only in terms of the height of structure, but in... It's concerning, not only in terms of the height of structure, but in terms of the totality of density that's coming to Crab Apple, and I think it's happening without folks that live there and around there really understanding the breadth and depth of density that may be headed to Crab Apple. That's concerning, and I think there's not been enough transparency around it. With regards to the item tonight and parking, I'm not sure how we even got to nine units per acre, much less 14 units per acre. I have to agree with earlier comments that a cap is absolutely needed, but I believe, if my memory serves me, that at one point, the maximum allowed in Crab Apple was five units to the acre with the overlay. The cap is now three times that, and that's before we've even gone into yet another Crab Apple plan that's going to supersede the last plan that supersedes the last plan. It just seems that it's kind of a runaway train, and I hope that folks are actually paying attention to the math because it's going to get away from us before we even realize what happened. So I would question the amount of units per acre. I would question why a bonus is allowable. I would agree with prior comments that the development standards have always required a certain amount of parking with a certain amount of density. This seems to be an end-around to bypass the requirement of having parking as part of the requirement for the development to begin with. That's how we've always done it, and that doesn't mean that we shouldn't look at things differently, but this surely seems a way to bypass the prior standards and instead allow for more density than what would otherwise be allowable. I also have questions regarding how the TDRs are actually being utilized. I think it's important that we remind ourselves, when we went from the Crab Apple overlay to Form-Based Code, people were gifted with increased density. They were gifted. One day, they didn't have it, the next day, they were gifted with the density, and no TDRs were required. We're about to gift it again, and at some point, I think we need to look at who's benefiting from the gifts and yet who's having to pay for it. I think there's a lot of question that surrounds the bonuses. I don't think we need bonuses for parking. I think we need to require the parking spaces to be part of the development and part of the density that's calculated, and I would also strongly urge us to please request staff to put together the math that would help us see from where we've come and where we're headed mathematically, and that we're not just guessing about the totality of density because it's a lot, and I think folks don't realize it. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Sudi, do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and ask Kathy to come back up and open up the floor for discussion and questions. Joe?
Kathy, while I don't think the growth has achieved exponential numbers yet, it's possible, but I don't think that we're there. I do know that there is a lot going on in Crab Apple, and I'm a little bit confused because normally, when we look at our ordinances in terms of commercial property or any kind of property that's going to attract customers, there is a ratio between the number of parking spaces that are required based on the number of square feet of the facility, okay? And that's an easy thing to calculate because you always start with one and you end up with the other. Whereas when you tack on a bonus for the square footage based on the number of parking spaces in a vertical structure, let's just call it that, you're creating a circular reference, and it gets very, very complicated and it's easily misunderstood, and I would venture a guess that if you looked at the end result, you wouldn't be able to tell which one created what. And so I was wondering, is there a way for us to simplify this and just say, if we're building in a parking structure, the required number of spaces per square foot is X versus trying to get to that same number by way of a building bonus or whatever you want to call it? I think it would just make it clear, and it would be easily understood for folks who are trying to, you know, trying to calculate that. Does that make sense? Did I confuse you?
Somewhat.
I tried not to.
Sorry. Well, let me just go back a little if I may. You know, we do have parking requirements based on land use of how many square feet. Clearly, we have that.
Right.
The intent here was that when we originally wrote this Form-Based Code overlay for Crab Apple, we tried to encourage parking under a structure.
Right.
Essentially, is what we were looking at. And in order to encourage that so that we wouldn't have as much parking outside, we did allow for increased density. Now, this comes into play more for residential uses because you don't need a lot of parking. With commercial or restaurants, you need an awful lot of parking, but you can, with residential uses, for instance, with the amount of parking required, have some of it underground, and it does have an aesthetic better use. And I think that was the intent here. We just realized there was a loophole, and it had no limit on what you could do. So that was the intent, was to try and limit the amount. And we're not really talking about a deck, an outside deck, because we don't have that much large parcels because you would really, really need a very large parcel to pay, that will allow private developers to build that deck to get a return on investment. We have very many small parcels, and that came out on our Crab Apple placemaking plan, which you have not received the presentation on, but that was very clear in there that there was no way that a private entrepreneur or private landowner was going to be able to pay for any above-grade deck. And so we're really not referring to that when we say structured parking pragmatically. It's really, we're talking about parking under the buildings. And so... And I'm not sure I answered all your questions, but please feel free to...
So let's say it's... So we're saying it's one level below whatever the structure is, so it's just underground parking is what we're referring to here.
Right.
So it wouldn't apply anywhere else.
That's right.
Correct?
That's right.
And so still, I guess, the idea that adding parking spaces somehow impacts the square footage of the building itself, again, it just seems backwards. It seems like we should be just reducing the number of spaces required if they're underground.
Well...
Because that's... That gets to the same point, right?
Yes, and that we would like to... We would like to encourage them to go underground as opposed to above ground.
Right.
Now, it's not to say, and I just want to correct one thing, is that if someone hypothetically could build a deck, this would be covered. Practically speaking, we really don't see the feasibility of anyone being able to build a deck because you need a certain amount of acreage in order to do that, and income-producing development in order to support a deck, which is an extremely expensive type of development initiative.
Right.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Bill?
Several questions. Adopting this amendment here, would it preclude the normal requirement for parking for each of those or all of those?
No, not at all. Not at all.
So you'd still have to have surface parking to accommodate?
That is correct. On the site.
On-site parking.
Right. Unless we came up with some arrangement or something where they had a lease with some off-site parking, but that would be in a case-by-case. But generally speaking, it has to be on the site.
And the development would have to make provisions for that parking. So we're not talking about the possibility of those tenants in that building parking on the side streets and...
That is correct.
Bacon lots and stuff like that.
That is correct.
Okay. With this amendment here, you're given a bonus going from nine to 14 units with this parking configuration, but you're still going to require onsite parking to accommodate all the units.
Right.
So with a TDR, you'd still have the same bonus. Would that still require all of those units, the original base units plus the bonus units, to have parking?
Absolutely.
Parking's going to be a big issue down there.
It is.
It's a big issue now.
That's right. It's the limiting factor in terms of development, in a sense, down there.
But I think it was all taken in consideration when we develop these transect zones down there.
We did.
Would you agree with that?
That's right. And the T5 is the most dense one, and that really is along what would be the Main Street. Most of Crab Apple is Zone T4, which has a maximum density of five units to an acre with a TDR allowance up to nine units. So it's a lower density in the T4.
Now, there's a development for review at this point in time. It's a mixed-use development, retail, office, and residential. And if there's a bonus attached to the residential portion of this job, how would that impact the entire development, knowing that there are parking requirements for both the office and the retail commercial, which call for greater need for more parking spaces?
We would look at that in terms of the residential use and allow shared parking because, as most communities do, that you share the same parking as the office use because the office is there nine to five and people are coming home after work, and so that's that same parking is used. And that's pretty much standard procedure is to consider that, and we have certainly done that as we get some of these mixed-use developments in.
Right. Thank you.
Karen?
I think realistically, we have two issues here. We have the issue that's actually before us, which is the reduction in density that would be allowed based on this change to the ordinance as it is currently written because it's actually reduction. And then we have the bigger issue, which is the overall Crab Apple, the development of the downtown area and all that, that I assume we're going to be seeing the revised plan sometime soon on all of that.
Yes, it's planned to come before you at your February 8 work session.
Because, I mean, I will be honest with you. The second plan that they brought forward was much better than the first, but to me, it is still way too dense. Personally, I believe it is denser than it needs to be, and I believe parking would be an absolute disaster if it was built out the way it is. I mean, we want the density in that Crab Apple area. We want to prevent the density from the rest of the area, the rest of Milton, but there's got to be a limit to it. And I think that, you know, what has been put forth in the latest plan I have seen is still much denser than I could support for our downtown area. It may work in Midtown, it may work in Decatur, it may work in, you know, Virginia Highlands area, but it's not what I want to see for Crab Apple. So I think we've got two totally separate things here. We've got this little thing here, which actually reduces density that would be allowed, which is the ordinance that is actually what is before us tonight, and then we've got the bigger issue of the overall density in the Crab Apple area that I'm assuming we will look at as part of the downtown placemaking process.
That's correct. That is correct. And you'll see, I think it's February 13th.
Okay.
Sure. Bert?
So just to be clear, this amendment is not adding any bonus. The bonus, if there is, is already there. This is capping it.
Right.
So if nothing else, it's a good stopgap, even if we look at some other things. We need to at least get this cap in before anything else comes on the table.
Exactly.
And then we can at least know where we're at, and then we can look if we need to, as Karen said, overall.
Right. That's right.
Is this mainly directed at residential properties?
Well, it's... Well, it could be mixed use as well, but, you know, we had no cap, so we used the TDR cap because we felt that had already been vetted before, so that's why we chose that one.
But at least it gets us a cap for today and tomorrow.
Absolutely. That's right.
And then we can look for next week.
You're right. It's a stopgap measure to get us...
It would change if we need to.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. I'll open up the air and I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 17-011.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Kootz. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously, Sudi. Okay, you've got one more zoning item, if you would call that. Sudi?
Next item is consideration of Use 16-01, B.C. 16-03, 2785 Francis Road by Chrysalis Experimental Academy, to consider a use permit for a private school, Section 641831, with a maximum of 25 students within the existing structure and a concurrent variance to reduce the undisturbed buffer, 64-1143A3B. Agenda Item Number 17-012. First presentation was at the January 9th council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant for this use permit has requested that it be withdrawn, and you should have his withdrawal request letter in your packet.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this, Sudi?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing then. So obviously, the council can choose to not accept it or accept the withdrawal, correct, Ken? Or is there any decision that...
What you could do would simply be to acknowledge and agree to the withdrawal.
Okay. So I have a motion to accept or acknowledge this.
I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal of Agenda Item Number 17-012.
Second motion.
Okay. We've got a motion from Councilmember Kootz, second by Councilmember Lask, for to accept the withdrawal. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Okay, I know we moved a couple items from the consent agenda. Would that go under new business? Did we put that to new business or...?
We did. Yes, we did.
Okay. So Sudi, if you would please call that before we go to unfinished business, I believe.
No, unfinished and engaged.
Or do we...
Unfinished business. I have one more zoning.
My bad.
Consideration to amend Chapter 50, Article 3, Division 1, Section 50-71. Compliance with city procedures and guidelines required paved and unpaved roads. Agenda Item Number 16-285. First presentation was at the December 5th council meeting, discussed at the December 12th council work session, deferred at the December 19th council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this text amendment is to amend the subdivision ordinance, Chapter 50, to make it consistent with the zoning ordinance, specifically the zoning text amendment changes that you made this past evening, which are Section 64-416, subsection E2. And those, under that section, you made changes to the gravel road ordinance, and this is to make reference to that zoning ordinance so that they both read the same way.
Okay. Do you think you want to add to that, Ken?
I don't.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Maybe back to Ken then. With the revisions that we made to the other two agenda items, are they still compatible with this item here?
I believe that they are. That's what we're listening to.
Okay. Any more questions, concerns, or motion?
Any public comment?
Comment?
No, I didn't know that we had any public comment.
Oh. I don't know. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do have one, sir, and that's from Mr. Cleveland Slater.
Okay.
Cleveland Slater, 13670 Bethany Road, Milton. This is the section, the subdivision ordinance that includes the language "has access to unpaved road," and this language is being proposed to be deleted from the subdivision ordinance. So there was some discussion earlier that we may have language somewhere else in another ordinance that would protect us when a lot has access to an unpaved road, that it remain a minimum of three acres. But I think there was some uncertainty about that. I do feel comfortable with the diagram that was determined to be included, suggested that the diagram be included, that we probably address that uncertainty, but I request that you ask the city attorney if he is comfortable deleting this language tonight, today, with the degree of uncertainty that may remain about the consequences of removing the protections that are provided by the requirement that if a lot has access to a gravel road, it must be three acres or a larger tract. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any more public... Any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll open back up. Counsel, Bill?
So in section nine, using the term adjacent there. Want to make that compatible with the other?
Abutting.
Right, yes.
Anything else?
I'll ask, you heard Mr. Slater's question?
Right, well, so we got into this debate somewhat the first time this came around. I mean, if you're asking me to the extent that there is a subdivision regs and then there's a zoning regs, first of all, we're making them consistent, which I like. But secondly, if there's one that's going to control over the other, I think the zoning code is going to control over the subdivision regs anyway. So I do think there's protection. And candidly, I think that tweaks we made earlier to the zoning regulations end the debate, as far as I'm concerned. Now, we've not only had a tweaking of the language, which I think addresses the issue, but the diagram, to me, is going to end all doubt as to the appropriate interpretation of it.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll make a motion if we're ready. I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item number sixteen dash two eighty-five. Consideration to amend chapter fifty, Article three, Division one, Section fifty dash seventy-one. Compliance with city procedures and guidelines required for paved and unpaved road with the change that we say, change the word adjacent to to abutting and unpaved road to be consistent with our prior approval.
Second. Okay, got a motion for approval from Councilmember Thurman, second from Councilmember Koots. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Please sound the next final unfinished business item.
Next item is consideration of an ordinance of the City of Milton, Georgia to amend chapter two of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia to provide for compensation for the Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Design Review Board to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances to provide an effective date and for other lawful purposes. Agenda item number seventeen zero one three. First presentation was heard at the January ninth council meeting. Mr. Ken Girardi.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a proposed ordinance that we have discussed at work sessions, already been through first presentation. This is consistent with the City of Milton charter that authorizes the council to set the compensation for members of boards, committees, and authorities that are regulated by the city council. This provides for three different sorts of compensation. One was to the Planning Commission, Design Review Board, and Board of Zoning Appeals that would amend all the pertinent regulations with respect to those entities. And will provide for a per diem or for a fifty dollar compensation per member for each meeting that is a meeting as defined by the Open Meetings Act. Fully within your purview to do this, my recommendation, this is ready for your consideration, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and then other jurors, this is fairly typical, correct?
It is typical to provide some means of compensation for those individuals.
Not that anybody would serve on a board because of the.
No one is getting, no one is, no one is getting wealthy serving on the Milton Planning Commission.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, Ken, in here it says for the meeting that they attend, not just scheduled meetings, they have to attend in order to get the stipend.
Right, they have to actually attend the meeting, that is correct. And it has to be a bona fide meeting under the act, not just a meeting with.
Show up and.
Exactly.
Okay, Bill?
If they attend all twelve meetings, that's six hundred dollars. How are they classified then? Are they classified as an employee or?
You know what, I think there are actually, and I have to help, ask Stacy to help me on this. I think there are actually some IRS regs on this that provide a unique, yeah, form of classification, but I'm not sure how they're classified. I know it's not as, I don't believe they classify as employee.
There wouldn't be full time.
This has definitely been one of those subjects that we've discussed time and time again, trying to figure out how is the best way to to pay them, whether or not it's under a ten ninety-nine thing or if it's an employee. I think we're still going back and forth on the decision. I know we've been in touch with Ken's office. I believe that, I could be wrong, but I believe that Ken's office was suggesting that if we are telling them when to be there and where and all of that stuff, they do constitute as an employee and there's, we had to withhold taxes and all of that stuff that goes along with it. We're still working on that to make sure that that is definitely the way to go. We're talking with other jurisdictions as well to find out how they handle that.
And to Stacy's point, I mean, this is so routinely done that there's a lot of sort of precedent for how other jurisdictions are doing it. So I'm sure that one of my folks is probably walking them through that.
So then, I guess we need to advise these folks that withholding will kick in. And the net is going to be about, what, thirty-eight dollars?
I'm going to speculate.
It's definitely easier if we could just do a ten ninety-nine.
It is.
Yeah, because that torpedo's the whole reason to have it in place in the first place.
And again, my point to each of your points, there's got to be, I haven't checked around on other jurisdictions, how they do it.
We're trying.
As a stipend or something to where it's, you know.
I thought there was a minimum number of hours in a week that you had to work in order to be classified as a as an employee.
The IRS has a whole list of.
Right.
Different tests, and if you meet certain tests, one of them is control, one of them is location, one of them, you know, there are a bunch of different ones. But one of the things they do look at is what the prior, the precedents that has been set previously, and that may be where we're able to get away with just giving them a ten ninety-nine.
Good.
I imagine a lot of them would waive it as well, give it back to their city.
Maybe. Okay, well, we'll task, let's task you guys to find out the.
We will look at it.
Do it, right now, we're voting on.
Do.
Right, you're just voting on the, yes.
And if you find a problem, you can bring it back to us fully actually. All right, Rick?
And I guess, Ken, the question would be, are there different ways to term this? Is it, is it considered compensation? Is it a stipend? Are there, I know there's boards that, like SONI EMC, has an advisory board, customer advisory board, and they give give a check for every meeting that you participate in and attend. And I I don't recall seeing a ten ninety-nine for anybody who has done that. So I guess the question is, how do other organizations do it? Do you need to change the wording of this so it's not compensation?
Right, so so what the the charter provides, we can authorize compensation and reimbursement for actual necessary expenses. So I think that may get to the heart of what we're doing here. Is it compensation or is it reimbursement for gas time, travel time, et cetera? But I can't answer, I don't think that how we draft this resolution affects how we categorize them for tax purposes.
Okay.
I think I just need to work with Stacy's office and get this resolved, get it answered. I mean, it's just a couple, it should be just a couple of phone calls.
Okay. Make a motion, Bill?
Just quickly, is forty-nine dollars easier to work?
Forty-nine ninety-nine.
It does keep it under six hundred.
That's exactly right.
Well, six hundred wouldn't matter if it's an employee. That only matters if it's ten ninety-nine, so.
That is correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Bill?
Mayor would like to move to approve an ordinance of the City of Milton, Georgia to amend chapter two of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia to provide for compensation for the Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Design Review Board to provide for the repeal conflicting ordinances to provide an effective date for other lawful purposes. Agenda item number one seven dash zero one three. Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Lask, second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, now we'll move to new business, which some of the items on our agenda have been taken care of. But we'll move to the two items that were added. Sudi, if you please call those items.
First item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and the University of Georgia Research Foundation, Inc. to provide assistance on the development of community septic system review guidelines. Agenda item number seventeen zero two eight.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Do we want to hear these two together? The two items that were deferred are really the same issue.
I'd be okay with that if the council is.
Sure.
Okay.
We do have a public one.
Okay, all right, if we've got public comment, be glad to hear that.
And that's Ms. Julie Zoner Bailey.
Good evening, I'm still Julie Zoner Bailey, and I still reside at two fifty-five Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia, three thousand and four. I believe that there were, this, I guess originally was in the opening statements, and it's my understanding, hearing the mayor speak, that it's been moved to new business. So thank you for the opportunity to address you regarding community septic. My statements are, I suppose, somewhat general, but specific, if that can be possible. Citizens have expressed concerns with sewer extension and community septic since long before we became the City of Milton. It's not a new issue, it's an old issue. And thousands have voiced their opposition to both sewer and community septic extension. Most would say that community septic is indeed an extension of sewer. But rather than debate, to debate that, the effect of bringing community septic is the same effect as extending sewer. Sewer and community septic both allow for higher density than what would otherwise be allowable in the City of Milton. Therefore, neither should be allowed in our AG one rural areas or residential areas. Please do not expend taxpayer dollars, citizens' money, to hire consultants to extend community septic into our AG one residential rural areas. I ask that the City of Milton prohibit prohibit community septic. Thousands have asked for that same thing prior to this evening. And I'm here to ask you once again to please adhere to the policies that have been adopted historically and to the promises that were made at the time of your elections, which included not having sewer or sewer-like extension. I would ask that we not hire the consultants. I don't think we need to spend the money. If you are going to hire the consultants, I would ask that you please limit the scope of their work to ensure that community septic is not considered for residential development at all. Again, I oppose its use for commercial development because it does allow for the proliferation of community and commercial extension, where otherwise it would not be currently allowed due to the types of soils that we have in Milton. Community septic would indeed bring higher density than what current zoning laws allow and what the current Fulton County Health Department regulations require and allow. Actual yields would increase with the extension of community septic. Beyond density, community septic also introduces a whole host of issues. Many of these issues that the two consultants that are before you this evening, not here physically, but in terms of a contractual obligation, noted in their presentation. They talked about oversight limitations. We don't have the oversight within the City of Milton to adequately oversee community septic extension or the extension of that throughout the city. It does represent financial liability to the City of Milton and therefore to the citizens. It does introduce environmental risks because the systems fail, they do fail. We've heard that from the EPD. There's a whole host of reasons, I could spend an hour talking to you, I don't have that. So once again, I would ask you to please prohibit community septic. I don't think that we need to expend taxpayer dollars. We've heard from taxpayers, you've heard from taxpayers, the majority of whom do not want community septic nor do they want sewer extended. And both bring the same ultimate results. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay, all right. A while back, we were in discussions, and I know this is a hot topic, and, you know, I think the council was mixed. The discussion was to explore at some point community septic, which I believe this is why it's on our agenda. I know I for one was okay with approving it, not approving it, but looking at the options with, if possible, on the non-residential side. The reason I asked to bring this off this consent agenda and to discuss it is, my personal opinion is, at this point, I don't believe we've had any, anything come before us, whether folks are against it or support it on the non-residential side that would put us in a push to do this. And again, on the on the residential side, I myself, I did not support that. So again, I have a hard time spending any money on both of these, you know, taxpayer dollars if we're not, for no reason that I see to go ahead and do that. If we, at some point, you know, there was a, I know Councilmember Lask had talked about, and the rest of, you know, some of us about on a non-residential, a mixed use type thing. But at that point, I think, I've always said, we can put a man on the moon. If the council and the city decides to do a develop, certain type of development, the engineers can figure out how to deal with the waste on that. So again, I brought it up for discussion because I personally didn't want to move forward to spend the money at this point if what I see is hopefully no reason. So I'll open it up to council. Matt?
I have to take the opposite view on that. You know, obviously, we have a disappearance of our equestrian opportunities all over the place. My my neighbors and I have seen it firsthand. The AG one zoning that we currently have doesn't do what's been advertised as far as maintaining that logo that's behind us. And anybody that understands technology as far as it goes, we ought to be open to these ideas to find out exactly what they can do to help us achieve the very objectives we have set before us. You know, since that time, one resident mentioned Randall O'Rent, you know, about quoting him. I actually called him two weeks ago to see how things were going. And development of conservation subdivision ordinance continue to increase. In fact, our very consultant, Don Broussard, just got a job helping the City of Thomasville with their conservation subdivision ordinances. So it's happening as far as that goes. And it is a very idea, the crazy part is, is that they looked at the very attacks that were on him when that happened. He was very forthright on that, and they still went through it because they understand how good the idea was on that end. I've met another city councilman that I've known for a long time, who is over in Flowerie Branch. His name is Curtis Northcutt. It was very interesting. I didn't know this about him until Mayor's Day. I sat with him, asked how things were going, and he actually wanted to know how we were doing with our conservation subdivision ordinance. And I asked him why he asked. Well, it turns out he lives in one. And he's very happy with the fact that it actually increases property values, which is the very thing many of us swore that we would do upon our election. If you Google conservation subdivision home values, you will see ten articles or more indicating about how every single one of them have increased property values, which is what we did. So here's the thing, I am for contiguous green space, which AG one does not do. I am for paving fewer rows of asphalt, which I don't think AG one does. I am for cutting down fewer trees, which I think that conservation subdivisions will do. And I think we need to be open to technology that will do this. And all I'm saying is, is if we cut this off, then we minimize our opportunities and the lands that may be large around us. If we want to find any kind of a compromise on as far as what we're doing, the very comprehensive plan that this council voted for, including my predecessor on August eighth of two thousand and eleven, said to implement conservation subdivision ordinances eight times, consider it twice, implement it six times. And so that's the reality of what it is, the the landscape is changing. We have economic pressures that are facing us. And we're sitting here saying that we're going to continue to have these AG one arguments as we are trying to do right now. And I, you know, I think that we need to make sure that we keep our property owners whole and that we need to be innovative in our approaches. And limiting technology is not innovative. It just isn't. This council's too smart, I think, to do that. I think we should just know all the facts as far as it goes. Some people say citizens don't want it. I've heard from fifty percent that do, fifty percent that don't. Everybody's a citizen. Everybody's a citizen. Everybody's a citizen. Everybody's a citizen. And I'm just going to sit there and say, we may disagree. We may issue threats and things like that on that. And I respect, everybody's right to say what they want to say. But I've seen firsthand how our lack of innovation has changed property values. We're limited those opportunities because of our contiguous land that has disappeared. It's happened again on Hickory Flat, another subdivision that's going in across from our own fire station. Could have been different, could have been different. And our residents are starting to wake up to knowing that in my corner of Milton. That is the truth. So that's just my thinking. I think we need to pass this. I think we need to make sure we know all the facts. The technology is changing all the time. And we need to be open to that technology. And then we just passed a Milton Equestrian Committee. You know, if they can get together and look at this to see if that type of technology might make sense to achieve those initiatives, which is what we all said we should do. I don't think we should limit them on those options. I think that we should make sure those options are there. So I am for, I said when I, upon my election, that I would fight for the equestrian nature of our community, and I intend to do it. I think we should use technology to do it. I think we should use every avenue possible to do it. I think we should have contiguous green space preserved. I think we should raise property values, as is innovative solutions tend to do and are starting to do more and more. And I think we need to pass this.
Okay, Joe? Carter, what are you going to spend the money on? Carter, what are you going to spend the money on?
So, after our discussion in September of 2016, there was a desire to not necessarily totally exclude the use of community septic, but to allow the evaluation of these systems on a case-by-case basis, either through a use permit or some other similar process. So, as part of that, we were tasked with going out to establish some guidelines, both on the requirements of the community septic system as well as the process, to bring those forward to the mayor and city council. And so, that's what these contracts are in place for. They are to help provide some technical and legal guidance on the use of these systems and how to bring them forward through some sort of special use or similar type process.
So, we're following up on something we said we were going to do, and we're just trying to be prepared for some moment in time when it could be applicable? Because as of today, I mean, we've got some community septic in place, but we don't have any applications for any additional. In fact, somebody remind me, but didn't we change the language of the, our ordinances to say that it was excluded for residential, but available?
We're under moratorium right now.
Okay, so this is where-
Moratorium. I think the comp plan-
I can't even remember where we are in the whole process.
You know, I think the comp plan removed it.
Yeah.
The comp plan removed all reference to-
Right, right. I just-
Conservation subdivisions.
I was just trying to get back to why we pulled this stuff off the consent agenda, because under normal circumstances, and rightfully so, you guys put it on the consent agenda because you just need to spend money on a consultant to get some work done. We pulled it off because, I guess our question is, do we need to spend the money?
That's the reason I pulled it off, did.
Yeah, I think there were quite a few people that had similar thoughts, so. So, I guess I just want to know, what's the burning, is it just to be able to report back to us that here's what we would have to do if we wanted to allow community septic? Is that the purpose?
That's right. The conditions under which they would be beneficial or warranted, how that process would come back to you, how this process would tie in with the state process, because remember, these are regulated by the state. But what we're going to look at is, where are those, where can that process be supplemented to better account for the needs in Milton, both from a technical design standpoint as well as from a maintenance and operations standpoint?
And what's the total amount?
They are hourly rate contracts, not to exceed $10,000 each. So, it's entirely possible that we don't get to the $10,000 threshold, but that's what they were established at to begin with, not knowing what the public process on the back end was going to be.
Alright, thank you.
And my question too. You know, we put the cart in front of the horse, and no, no offense to you, Carter, you're just doing, you know, checking it off the list, that was, was on list to do, but, you know, you know, again, if we're not really looking at any of these subdivisions, do we need to do it now, or it could, could have been put on the back end if the council decided to do a conservation subdivision or look at one, could the studies be, be done then too?
It could be. I mean, I think you've asked us in the past to be proactive in how we start looking at ordinances and issues that are coming before, so.
No, no, process is fine, but just asking the question.
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes, I support both of these for the reasons why we discussed them several months ago, and for the reasons that you just repeated there. The, our mission, I see it being up here, to set policy and to plan. Talk about spending money, we've spent thousands of dollars and hundreds of residents' time discussing and formulating the comprehensive land use plan. So, there's the very tool that we have here to plan for the future, and we spent a lot of money on it. In developing that comprehensive land use plan, we've identified certain areas of the city that are scheduled to be commercial. Of course, Highway 9, Crab Apple, and the future one is Highway 140, along with Birmingham Crossroads, which already has a wastewater treatment plan up there. But it's not the one at Birmingham Crossroads, does not have enough capacity to accommodate the rest of the development that's to go in Birmingham Crossroads. And dealt with that issue when that application came up for the townhomes and the loft apartments there in the southeast corner. Should we, should we defer this until we, we have an issue with it? Well, that's not, that's not proper planning, folks. We plan for stuff that we have already identified that are going to be issues down the road. So, we get ahead of it. We're not getting the cart in front of the horse, we're getting ahead of this whole issue. And it's just common sense, it's good planning, it's money well spent, and I think we owe it to people in the community. And the same, same folks out there that say they oppose this, were the ones vehemently in support of our comprehensive land use plan, which demands or dictates that we study points like this, planning. It's just another tool in our toolbox. We're not going to pave over paradise, we're not going to put apartments all over the remaining 20,000, you know, 20,000 acres out here. This is a planning tool, folks, and I think we owe it, we owe it to ourselves from the policies we've set in place already to conform with our comprehensive land use plan, and I think we'd better, better confirm what the path or the action that we set forth several months ago when we brought this up.
Okay, Karen and Al speaking.
I'm going to apologize in advance for rambling, but I'm just going to think out loud. Number one, I think conservation subdivisions can work great in certain areas. In order for them to work great, you've got to have a pretty big piece of property. I am not sure that we have any property in Milton that will be suitable for a conservation subdivision that could, based on the terrain we have, that could really be completely density neutral, and I would not support one at all that we, wasn't completely density neutral based on the steep slope ordinance and everything else we have. Number two, this technology's changing on a regular basis. I hate to go through and spend money on a plan for now that, by the time one comes up 10 years from now, that technology is all out of date and we've got to do it again. So, you know, I'm, I'm really torn on this because I believe in certain situations, you know, conservation subdivisions can be a good thing, but I'm not sure they're a good thing for Milton, and I'm not sure this is a good use of our Milton taxpayers' dollars right now.
Okay. I will let Bert, he hasn't spoken, then Matt, Matt's situation.
I'm not in favor of, of community septic in residential areas. I think we could look at it in some mixed-use type of places. So, I'm not in favor of spending any money on this consultant. Ag1 is, is kind of working in some places. I know of three parcels that were going to be put together in South, South Milton. Had it had community septic, it would probably had 60-plus houses. Ag1 was 50-something. It fell apart. One of the landowners sold theirs to somebody that's going to put horses on it, six acres. That's, that's working in my book. So now, if something ever gets developed there, it's probably going to be in the 30 homes. So, you know, we've, we've cut it maybe in half. So, I don't, I don't think we need to spend the money on this. If it's to look at specifically for commercial, mixed-use, that type of thing, that's another ballgame, but I'm not interested in it.
Yep?
Well, I'd love to invite you guys to come up my way so you can see the land that could be preserved with this. I'll be glad to show you. I mean, it's there. I've seen it, I've looked at it, I've seen the parcels, the maps from Steve's office. They're there, they exist, we can't deny that they don't exist.
Would you have to hear it?
They exist, the land exists, it's there. I'd be glad to take anybody up there to show you the land that's been disappearing up in our area with the equestrian land that's gone, that those opportunities have disappeared. And more importantly, that there hasn't been a collaboration of the four-step process for citizens in Milton to be a part of that process, to help determine where homes might go. You know, that's what the CSO actually had done. But there's another component here as well. You know, I think that component is the land trust option that is there. You can't look at conservation or community septic systems without understanding a land trust. I think if you get up there and you attack community septics without confirming that a land trust can be effective, that's not, that's not honest. Land trusts work to achieve these objectives, the flexibility of being able to place homes in a way that the citizens can collaborate and help determine where that is, can make the parcels that we have left better than they could be under AG1. So, my point is, as far as that goes, the land is disappearing. Another large parcel just went up last weekend, and it continues to go on, and I'll be glad to show this to you. I would love to take you guys up there and ride with me, so you can see what I'm talking about and drive through it. It's not just subdivisions as far as it goes, it is equestrian land, this logo, that has disappeared, and there is an economic challenge that's here that we have to face. Are we doing it in time? I don't think we've done anything as far as revising AG1, it's still disappearing. One just went away again last weekend, that after we revised AG1, it didn't do the trick. As I said, that was the case. So, once it's gone, it's gone. The contiguous land is gone, the land trust has to be included, the community septic has to be included. I think, you know, it's interesting, there's a great movie, a long time ago, Mr. Smith Goes to Washington, and it said, "The only cause is worth fighting for are the lost causes. We don't have much land left. We had a chance the last 10 years, we haven't done much with that. But darn it, I'm going to keep fighting for it as far as that goes." And I would hope this council would be inspired to continue to do that. It's not easy, but I think we should keep our options open, that's all I'm saying. And if we can analyze the technology to achieve our very objectives that we had set out to do, the logo that's up here, the comprehensive plan that was voted on in 2011, all of that is an important thing. This is not a matter of zoning, guys, this is a matter of principles. That's what this is. Principles so much so that, you know, I had people, I endured attacks, or people that were saying all kinds of horrible things about me, and I had to have additional police protection, police patrols around my house because of this. But you know what? It's right. I'm seeing it disappear, I've seen the land disappear, I've seen it, my neighbors have seen it. It happens, and I made a promise to the electorate that I would do this, and I'm not backing down on that. I don't know what everybody else's words are on that, but it's a very important thing that we preserve our equestrian character. It's not easy, and I may be speaking only to myself in here, but I think it's important. Joe?
Okay, Joe, then Karen? Yeah, I, I don't want to argue about whether or not we need to conserve land, whether or not we need to conserve an equestrian lifestyle. I think we made a decision that the CSO isn't the only way to do that, okay? What, what I think we're debating right now is, do we want to spend $20,000 to help figure out if, what role community septic has in this? So, so I want to, I just sort of want to limit the discussion to that.
And I do want to clarify that, this is not a discussion on CSOs in general.
Right, right.
Spending the money now on that.
Thanks for saying that. Alright, Karen?
Personally, I'd rather see $20,000 spent on trying to come up with some kind of tax incentive program so that the people who do have larger parcels will keep the larger parcels, or they will develop the parcels into three-acre lot subdivisions or five-acre lot subdivisions. I'd rather spend the $20,000 on that than on the community's septic that may or may not ever get used.
Anybody else? Bill?
I find it curious that we start talking about these two agenda items here that, that I promote, and I promote them from the standpoint of using them in our commercial areas, Birmingham Crossroads and Highway 140. And immediately, it gets turned into a discussion on CSO. Come on, folks, let's keep our eye on the ball here. And I also find it curious that the same people that support our comprehensive land use plan are using it in this particular case and in other cases to oppose something that certainly makes sense. They use the comprehensive land use plan when it supports their argument, and when it doesn't support their argument, they discount the comprehensive land use plan. So, the essence or the intent of these two agenda items is to get ahead of this issue at the rate that we're developing out here. I think we'd better have some common sense methods on how to handle these development issues, particularly in these two commercial areas. And to do otherwise, I think we're delinquent in, in our duties here. The whole essence of what we're doing is planning for the future, folks, and if we deny that concept, I don't think we're doing our job here. $20,000, I think we've wasted on other things out here.
Okay, Rick?
I guess to, Bridge, we talked about this, I mean, we keep bringing this up over and over again, and one of the areas that we said, we haven't really, that we've got a commercial node that we haven't really developed is all along 140 or Arnold Mill Road, and that was one of the areas. I guess the question I've got is, as you look at this, you're going to look at, if the consultants, if we pass this, would look at specific areas within Milton and say, what is the feasibility and how could it be used? Because that's, that's where, if we go back a couple months ago, we did talk about commercial nodes, specifically Arnold Mill and 140, which is, we haven't had really the development, and we know eventually, I mean, the state may widen it to four lanes in 20 years, but that still is a revenue source for our city without having the impact of going back to just the homeowners. And that's, I guess, where I'd be interested to see, what is the feasibility, how could it be used specifically in that area and within Milton from a commercial standpoint?
Right, so I think the intent of the document would be a technical document that would to give you some guidance on how, when, and where to use these types of systems. It would also recommend certain, certain, not necessarily specific systems, but certain types of systems that may be more suitable to our area than others, that may or may not be restricted under the state regulation. So, it's really more of a technical document rather than a policy document, but it would allow us to then understand how and when these could be used from a policy perspective.
So, if you did do this, essentially, as we're looking at, let's say, commercial or different areas, it may say, that's not feasible in our area, that's not a good solution. Or it could say, for mixed-use or for commercial in that area, this may be applicable in these certain ways.
Yes, so it would say, under these types of conditions, certain things should be done or used in those areas. As those areas come in for development, we can look and see if they meet those types of conditions and whether or not that community septic system would be suitable in that area.
I guess I, what I don't want to do is open, I think we kind of, we're opening this up talking about CSO, and I don't think that's really, at least from my vantage point, that's not really the impact I was looking at, because we do have to look at our ongoing tax base, our ongoing way of developing, and from a commercial standpoint, the one node, well, there's a couple nodes, but the one node that's untouched, that will be developed, and it is designated for commercial corridor is along 140. I'm in favor of saying if, if it's a minimum investment of up to $20,000, that's going to give us some more detail. I think that may be good money, money well spent at this time.
Okay, and to clarify too, you know, this is not a discussion about CSOs. Now, some of the folks wanted to discuss that more, but to Councilmember Loska's point, it was not about, it was about spending the money now, not, never, or at a later date. So, and if you wanted to, you know, the comp plan has been brought up, it, you know, as time moves forward and, you know, some of the areas that in the comp plan are called for commercial and whatnot, you know, the, the private market tends to start bringing interest in and whatnot, and, I mean, in my opinion, if, if that's the case, and folks start looking at the areas that are in the comp plan that are for more, more density and might need this, I'm thinking they will bring that, you know, the community development department will hear that, you know, then we can engage and spend the money then. So, that's my, that's my position, and I respect everybody else's. I know we're, we're mixed on this, but, you know, at this point, I don't, I can't support spending the money because I think it just kind of leads, you know, it's the tail wagging the dog. It leads that, and then it gets the interest up and, and, you know, may ignite something that I don't know that everybody wants to do. Anyways, again, we're not talking about community septic or CSOs, we're talking about these two items to study, community septic-
two items to study, community septic, so on the table, so I'm open for a motion to either approve or deny this contract.
I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to deny Agenda Item 17028.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. I have a notion, a motion for denial from Councilmember Hewitt, a second by Councilmember Long, Long Gory. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so it looks like a four to three. Approve, approval of that?
Approval of the motion. Yes, sir.
So, and then you have the, you need to take the votes on up here. Okay, all right. Do we need two votes for that, Ken? It was two separate items.
I was expecting there would be one more. I know they were combined for purposes of discussion, for purposes of discussion, they were.
Okay, for purposes of discussion, but then let's clarify that this next motion is for the second.
Correct, that's.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
That we approve professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Dr. Robert Rubin to provide assistance on the development of community septic system review guidelines, Agenda Item Number 17-29er.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Lewis, with a second from Councilmember Coons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I believe that was four to three in opposition to the motion. Okay. All right, bounced around here, so Sudi Dewitt is our next item on our agenda.
Looks like the reports.
Contract.
Okay. I had asked to add an executive session, I believe.
We've got staff reports.
Okay.
I think we can bypass those for the.
We defer those.
I had asked for executive session, but let me ask staff, do you have any other than my item? Do you have any other that we need to talk about?
For executive session? We do not.
Okay, I'm gonna ask them that we, we don't, we just do that another time.
Okay.
It's okay, so we'll need to vote on it, I assume, since we added to the agenda. Do I have a motion that we?
Not moving to executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Make your motion. A negative.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Lewis, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Coons, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, if, do we need, do we need to defer items number 12 and 13?
We can, yeah, we can do that. I think Steve offered, did not do the staff reports, but if we've got anybody in council that wants to do a report, please do.
I'm sure there's one, there's one item in particular, and Rick and Bill and I were there, but there's a nonprofit called No Longer Bound that is pretty good, so I think, you know, it's an awesome organization, which is, it hits home with me, because my brother-in-law passed away from a drug addiction, and what they do is they help drug addicts, from a faith-based perspective, recover and get back into the real world with actual jobs that they do. And it's an interesting, interesting concept, but it's a phenomenal concept, and I think it's one that we should explore more, is invite them here to potentially show what they do.
Oh, absolutely. In fact, I've been in discussions, and I'll let you, Bill, because I did the same thing prior to you guys, and in fact, just the other day, wrote a letter in support of No Longer Bound, but it, you know, it's, they deal with addictions and issues that touch most all of us in our community, and I tell you what, just inspirational, and to see what the guys have done there and turned their lives around and all, so it's definitely a great, even though they're right across the border, they definitely serve our area. Great organization and great, great things they're doing. So, Bill?
Just tag on to that, too. With the presentation they gave us, made me more aware of the big problem in this area, and it's heroin addiction, and it's closer to us than we really believe. And I feel like there are a lot of people in denial about that issue, and it's gonna be a major educational effort to bring it all out in the open, help, we bring everything else out in the open. But enough said about that. One comment on Mayor's Day, took a course on downtown development authority, and we talk about tools in our toolboxes, and we may not need it now at this point. It's a tool, and I think eventually we could use it Crab Apple Crossroads, and possibly out in Birmingham Crossroads. I'd like to take a look at it, or investigate the possibilities of us at least forming, getting the framework for developing one that we could use sometime down the road. And there are enough living examples out there from a lot of the other jurisdictions in the state, for sure. And we can get help from GMA to create the framework of an organization like that. But having gone through the course, and realize all of the benefits from it, and a lot of good things developed from an organization like that, I'd like to open up the discussion sometime, get Ken involved in it with his experience with him, and Steve too, has been exposed to him, I'm sure. It's a good course.
Okay, I actually, you know, also on Mayor's Day, I took a really good course too, on law enforcement and procedures and practices, and had some really good speakers, then I had a real boring speaker. Oh, I'm sorry, Ken, I forgot it was you.
No, great, great class. Rick?
I guess to branch off from what you guys have said, the three of you, I did attend the No Longer Bound briefing the other day, and I've been familiar with them. We can, you can donate your vehicles, used vehicles, the sale goes for funding the properties. They also have opportunities for people who have different skills to come in and actually help and work onsite, whether it's construction or maintenance, they're looking for folks there. But to see what they're doing with men, and it is, it is for men. From this area, we have people from Milton, they keep a confidential, but there are people from Milton that are in the program right now, so, and we know that we lost, you know, through substance, we lost a high school student. So it, it's, we're in that triangle in North Fulton. I did attend a workshop on Sunday, which I can share with you guys offline, some of the statistics about the heroin that's being sold and opiates that are being sold in downtown Atlanta that are coming straight up here. People go in, buy it, and they bring it up here to the suburbs. So we don't, we wanna pretend it's not there, but we've had students die from it, we've had adults die from it in our own community, and I think it's a great program to try to help people. It was, it was pretty powerful to hear someone from Milton actually speak to us about his addiction and the things he went through, and how he was addressing, and how this program was helping him. But also to learn through Mayor's Day, they did, they had workshops on Sunday where they share about the issues in Atlanta and the metro area, and what they're trying to do. I've got some of the contact information to see, how do we get information, tie in to actually what our state government is doing too. And the same thing, they also talked about, another topic that's close is human sex trafficking, which also is a big issue in the Atlanta metro area, and people are trying, they, you know, there's people we know that were recruited from Roswell that were impacted, so that's another one where we have, we have issues that we wanna pretend sometimes don't impact us, but they are in our own community. We need to try to at least be aware, and I know, Steve, you're aware of, kind of, you've lived through that before too, seeing what we can do in our community, try to make it safer for our families.
And also to piggyback on what's been said about No Longer Bound, and just, you guys know, have been in communication with Edward Bailey after the presentation and whatnot, and had offered, would then become, do a presentation, in order of a work session, in order of a meeting at some point, so, you know, if you're talking to him too, because it's very powerful. I think our community needs to know what the resources are out there. Okay, anything else? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to second, to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The passing of the name.